Good morning. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, October 26th. I'll note for the record that all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is a presentation and to receive an update on Mesa's Community Electric Vehicle Charging Plan. Ian, good to have you with us.
Hello.
Looks like you brought a smart person to help you with this presentation?
Brought reinforcements.
Yes.
So, good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Ian Linsen. I'm an assistant to the city manager. And with me is Brad Davis from Kimley Horn. He helped us do the lion's share of the analysis that we're about to discuss with you today, but brought a ton of national expertise to this conversation because this is, while we're focusing, obviously, locally on the city of Mesa, what we're about to talk about is happening nationally and frankly globally. But, so, I'm going to let Peter do, walk through a lot of the details, the research, and some of the findings that we have. But before we do that, I kind of want to talk a little bit about why we're talking about electric vehicles. And as you know, for the past several years, we've looked at electrifying our own city fleet. This is not that conversation. This is a conversation about what is going on with electric vehicles in our community and frankly, in the broader market across Arizona and across the United States. And as we started looking into this, I mean, what quickly became apparent, and something I've discussed with you all before, is that EVs are here. The market is moving, the transportation market is moving towards electrification. Now, it's not happening overnight, but it's happening. We all see them on the roads. And so, the question we started to ask then is, if it is here, if the market is moving towards EV, where is Mesa relative to this market change? How well positioned are we? Are there gaps? And spoiler alert, and not to steal Brad's thunder, but we did identify some gaps. So, when it comes to, when it comes to charging, when it comes to awareness of EV, when it comes to accessibility. So, there's certain populations, certain uses within Mesa that have less access to this. And so, what we did is, again, extensive analysis of the existing situation here in Mesa and across the country frankly. We did kind of a forecast of where we think this is going. And then, we identified those gaps, and if those gaps get worse, better. And then, and then finally, really, the meat of this is what I was calling kind of a series of menu options that the council can now kind of ruminate over, can think about, that might help address the gaps that we've identified. And one thing just to note, and maybe the last thing I'll say about this all, is those, the menu options, don't necessarily always involve the city. So, this is not, one thing I guess I should make clear is, the responsibility to adapt to what the market is doing does not fall solely within the city of Mesa. There are a number of ways that we can help address this. So, public-private partnerships, just the private sector in general, regulatory situations, which would of course fall within your purview, and that sort of thing. So, hopefully, that helps kind of set the stage a little bit. And then, with that, I'll let kind of Brad walk through, and I may jump in from time to time, so I apologize.
Please do. Good morning, everyone. Good to see many of you again. I know I spoke with many of you earlier in the year as we were getting this going. So, I'm excited and happy to share the kind of draft results that we've worked through with Ian and with the community as well. So, you had some of the information in your packet, and what I'm going to do today is just kind of share, kind of pull some of the key threads through, and then, you know, happy to answer any questions that you might have. But I wanted to start with EVs today in Arizona, in Mesa, and the country, just kind of what those themes are in the marketplace. I think the takeaway, the big takeaway, just in the market in general, is that adoption is both fast and slow. And so, you know, this graphic here is just saying, you know, even if, you know, 100% of sales were, you know, electric, that, you know, even out to 2035, they're not even going to be half of the total number of vehicles that are registered and on the road. It's going to take a long time for those vehicles to turn over. But that doesn't mean that growth is occurring pretty significantly. So, these two charts help kind of paint that fast and slow dynamic. So, on the left is EV sales and share of the total market in terms of sales each year. And so, you can see a very significant increase over the past 10 years or so, and now they account in Arizona for 7% of all vehicle sales. So, significant growth and market share. But on the right, you can see that they have just crossed over the 1% threshold for total vehicles registered in Arizona on the road. So, significant growth, but still a long way to go in terms of change. But it is happening.
If I may, I just want to add one other stat that I just kind of came across. So, in 2020, it took up until 2020 for 250,000 of all vehicle registrations in the United States to be electric. So, 250,000 electric vehicles were registered in 2020. This year, it was a million. And so, that's just, that's exactly what Brad was just saying, is this, we're continuing to see this uptick.
This is just a map showing where the existing charging stations are in Mesa, and the green points represent where the fast charging stations are. All the rest are Level 2. And, you know, they're largely clustered where you might expect them, along major corridors, with a few exceptions towards the north and east. And so, you know, part of our work and analysis was looking at where there's a need, but the market isn't there or there yet, you know? So, and then, one other thing too, because it might be a little confusing going back and forth, just, there's a difference between charging stations and ports. So, for some of the later analysis, it's that we're looking at individual plugs and that count, because some of these stations might have multiple ports at them. So, just wanted to make that note.
Sure. Mr. Freeman.
So, where are these ports and charging locations at? Are they at retailers? Where are they at?
They're a mix. They're across the street here, you know, at the library, obviously. But then, they are, last night, I actually charged over at the cinema, over by the Bass Pro Shop. Many of them are at the, at grocery store locations, some of the Voltal ones. But some of them, there was one at, I think it was Habitat for Humanity, like, they had some that were publicly accessible. So, it's a mix.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mayor, and Mr. Freeman, the other, the other thing I note too, there's also the standalone banks too that you're seeing, especially when it comes to Tesla right now, who has the most extensive network. I mean, they'll put 16 ports standalone. We've got two of those now, actually, in Mesa and West Mesa, so.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Yeah, a lot of hotels are adding them as well. That's right.
I mean, I was just looking at the dots on the map. I mean, Mesa's a large place, and there's not that many charging locations. So, I'll end with that.
Well, this slide kind of summarizes that. So, the green is the existing charging ports, and then, the blue notes the, you know, based on existing conditions today and what we modeled, like, what the, you know, demand is out there for the number of ports. And so, you can see there's a pretty significant gap, and that includes both workplace and public charging as well. But there's clearly a need. And the biggest need is with Level 2 charging. So, it's not necessarily, and you'll see in some of the other slides, that fast charging won't make up a significant part of what the need is. Most people will be parking, going to work, being in places that, where they will be parked longer, and so, the charge doesn't need to be as fast or powerful.
And so, are you, is this referring to the future need?
That's just today.
That's today. You're saying there's an 80%?
Gap in what's needed today, mm-hmm.
How did you determine, how do you determine that?
So, we model that based on a variety of factors, like access to home charging, the adoption rate currently in the region, a few other factors, so. And so, one of the things that is unique in Mesa, and that we'll talk about at the end in terms of, you know, a policy approach, is that the number of multifamily housing units is higher than what's typical in the U.S. You know, basically, four out of every 10 households are in multifamily property. And so, it's just harder to get access to charging in those types of buildings. And so, you know, one of the things that you all, you know, might want to consider, and we'll talk about it, is, you know, supporting permitting or other things that can help with access to home charging. So, tomorrow, EVs tomorrow. So, on the left here is the projected EVs on the road in Mesa out to 2030. And so, this projection was taking kind of national trends, and we took the Goldilocks kind of projection, the not-too-hot and not-too-cold, and it takes into account what some of the OEMs have committed to in terms of electric vehicle sales as well. And out to 2030, you still see this, you know, significant increase in sales and adoption as they become more available. And then, on the right here is just a share of distribution in terms of how people will charge, in terms of the share of number of ports needed. Again, 85%. Most of the charging will occur at home, but still, that 15% is a mix of fast charging and public charging or workplace charging. So, that, you know, that 15%, not the home-based charging, but the terms of number of ports needed on an annual basis, you know, kind of going out to 2030, this is what it looks like. And so, the pace is over 300 ports per year. And so, that's a lot of ports over the next seven years or so that are projected to be needed just here in Mesa.
And one thing to reiterate on this again, though, is, though this is the number needed, it's not saying that necessarily this won't happen, but we are just projecting that this is the need. We did project a gap already today, so perhaps there will continue to be a gap. But then, even if there is, again, it's not necessarily the responsibility of the city to fill that gap, but that gap could be filled by the market. We don't just have, we don't have accurate forecasts today as to what exactly the market is going to do to fill that need.
Jim.
I don't believe in our building code that we have any requirements for, in new construction, to have a percentage of spaces. Is that a consideration, especially when you get in some, definitely for multifamily environments, where you could have, make sure there's charging available in all multifamily so we don't have this lag?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Duff, yeah, absolutely. So, it is definitely something to consider, and in fact, you know, Brad and the team, we put that in as one of the recommendations, one of the strategic items that we could consider. And there is precedent for that in other communities across the country. There's precedent for that on single-family development, even in Glendale, you know, on the west side. It is something to consider for sure. There may be pluses and minuses to it, as there are to most things, but something for sure for this council.
So, other cities have requirements for like a Level 2 in a single-family environment, because getting Level 2 wired at your home is very, very expensive. It's prohibitive. And trying to charge on a Level 1 is, it takes a long time, a very long time.
I'd say, for the Level 2, a lot of, right now, utilities are taking a lead with a lot of the home-based incentives. So, you know, they, you know, 20% to 50% of the cost, and even sometimes, they're offering, you know, 100% of the cost, but then, they kind of bake that cost into the rate that you sign up for. So, there's a variety of ways that people are tackling it. On the multifamilies and commercial side of things, most of it is focused on what's typically referred to as kind of EV-ready spaces, where you require a certain number of, say, if you have 100 parking spaces, that 10% of 10 are EV-ready. So, they have the conduit in place so that if you want to add chargers, you put them in, but you aren't requiring them to actually install a charger as a part of the development.
Yeah, I've heard as high as 20%, but a consideration of having in our building code, even for a single family, is just having it EV-ready and pulled, because it's quite prohibitive, you know, to have Level 2 at your home because of the cost. And, yeah, electric utilities, like SRP, I know they have a thing, but if you're, I don't know how long that'll last, and how about if you're in the city of Mesa, electric utility? Yeah, just a requirement going forward, but I'm sure we're going to cover that in the recommendations.
So, one other thing, too, we did a survey as a part of this, an online survey, and we also had people drop, you know, pins on where, you know, they might want charging stations. And I don't include all of the responses here, but I think these two are worth highlighting. One, we just asked a simple question, do you have access to EV charging? At home, 28% of the people responded and said they did. And then, I thought these were interesting, the work and public access, you know, was kind of in a similar share. Even though, you know, you saw on the map, there is public charging available in Mesa, you know, at least their perception is they don't have access to it. They don't know where it is or how to get information about where it is, you know? And then, on the right, we just asked about what's the highest EV priority? I think we can all just kind of think about any particular day when we're out, you know, walking or driving around, and just the diversity of electrified things to move around the city is increasing. And so, obviously, personal cars were kind of top priority, as well as public transit. But there was a range of other things, and while they aren't lower, we did, they were lower, we did incorporate them into considerations that line up with your larger mobility goals for the city as well. And so, being able to focus and leverage those opportunities, you know, for example, e-bikes, many cities are prioritizing some type of e-bike incentive program, or at least for lower, you know, income residents or something that might qualify. So, just keeping the kind of range and diversity of opportunities out there as the markets change, I think is important. So, EV strategies. So, this is a little wonky, but I just want to kind of highlight how, like, turning the dials of public policy can impact charging demand and electrical load on the grid and things like that. And so, on the right, or sorry, on the left is business as usual. This is the public charging, you know, demand in terms of the number of ports for Level 2 and DC fast charging. And that kind of takes into account that 62% home-based charging, single-family home-based charging. And then, on the right, it's kind of highlighting, if you were to increase home charging access by 10%, that would result in a 17%, almost double, a decrease in demand of public charging, which you kind of, more people have access to charging at home, they can charge for longer periods of time. And so, that has implications in terms of just equity of access at home, you know, so you don't have to do anything different because you live in a multifamily building. But here, these two graphs highlight what that might look like in terms of demand to the electric grid. So, on the left is a model that would say, over the time of day, 50% of people have access to home charging. And you can see, more people need to charge during the day, and it pushes that peak, and it pushes the total demand higher during the day. As opposed to, on the right, if more people have access to home charging, it pushes that down, but it also pushes the maximum load that would be demanded on any particular day down as well, because it's kind of smoothed out over the day. So, in terms of public policy, you know, we were talking, you know, more access to home charging, making it easier in terms of permitting or other things, or incentives through utilities, or SRP, you know, coordinating with SRP as well, you know, it can help manage that demand and improve access.
Kind of related to the slide, I see Scott is here. So, we were going to have, for electric vehicle charging, some kind of incentive to, if you're charging at home, there's a discounted rate if you had it after hours, after the peak load, say, after 8:00 p.m., 10:00 p.m., whatever that load is. Where are we on offering that? Because, you know, inquiring minds want to know.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Yeah, so, we do have an EV charging rate that was passed with the last, as part of our rates. And so, that should be in effect now.
Oh, it is in effect.
And what it does is, it just incentivizes people to charge during the evening, after the peak hours. And so, that's, that's what that is for, is to try and knock down that peak demand so that people aren't charging when we're in our peak hours, but in those off-peak hours in the middle of the night, that they're able to charge and pay a lower, much lower rate for the electric.
Oh, I'm thrilled to know it's in effect. Can you tell me what the timeframes are?
I don't remember them off the top of my head, but I can definitely.
Okay, if you can give it to my office, and I'll post on that and, you know.
Okay, we can get you that information.
Program the car accordingly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question on the shifting peak hours concept. Ian and I met with our local utility a while back, and they said, long-term, I mean, 2030, 2050, when these cars are, you know, more common, we're all going to be plugging in our cars at night. And so, the electric, you know, the peak hour for, the peak demand for electricity, I think, is going to shift from the daytime hours to the nighttime, because the entire population is going home and plugging in their cars. And I think, long-term, the strategy would be, people have got to have access to maybe Level 2 chargers at work, so that particularly when it comes, like, you know, renewable electricity is probably going to be more prevalent, at least solar-generated electricity during daytime hours versus nighttime. So, I mean, maybe I'm imagining a problem 20 years from now, but we're planning for 20 years from now. So, is this the right strategy to say, oh, we're going to encourage people to plug in at night, because that's when the peak out, that's when we have cheap electricity, when on the horizon, the opposite is likely to be true?
Mayor, I'll try to tackle that, but then, maybe Brad can chime in from a national perspective. But I mentioned that to the Kimley Horn team, that we kind of had heard that conversation. And I think, you know, I'm not going to be one to doubt the utility, but I think you could see a variety of scenarios playing out. I mean, the fact of the matter is, at night, where most of us are sleeping, most of our high-energy use is not going to be occurring, whereas during the day, it still is. And then, throw cars on top of that, I mean, you are still going to have a very high demand during the day if you do it that way. I get the scenario, though, that that power is potentially cheaper because it's renewable, but there's also batteries that can take that load and distribute it over time. And I'm not so sure how much the utility has factored in that to their forecasts or their willingness to do batteries. So, I'm not sure that the future is set in any one way or not, but intuitively, it still makes sense that there will be less power demand overnight, even with the vehicles. But it's something to watch, for sure. You know, fortunately for us, we don't have a utility, an electric utility at least, that spans the entire city, and so, that's not going to really be something that we need to focus so much on. But it will highlight where, if there is a greater need for public charging at some point down the road. But I don't know if you have anything else on the national side that could speak to that?
Yeah, Ian mentioned the SRP strategy, and, you know, I don't know the specifics of that. I mean, I get the premise of trying to take advantage of the renewable and solar energy without having to have battery technology, you know, maybe built into that. But, I think, just more broadly, I think, at the stage that we're in, it's still kind of like early adoption, and I think, from a policy perspective, I still think it's probably prudent to take like an all-in approach of kind of going with all the different, you know, scenarios and strategies, and not like hanging, you know, the hat on any one particular approach. And then, you know, kind of adjusting and turning the dials as, you know, adoption comes onboard, and it's, utilities and others are able to get more information about, you know, travel patterns and charging patterns. Because, just like, you know, with the stock market, you know, going all-in on one particular approach and trying to, you know, time the, you know, the market, you know, it just, for most people, it just doesn't, you know, work out. And so, I think the same thing here is kind of continuing to take a diversified approach is the best way to do it. And for most people, you know, charging at home, I think, during off-peak hours is still going to be the best strategy for them personally, as well as kind of the capacity of the electrical grid right now.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that. And I think the idea that we're going to have ubiquitous cables in public and employment parking spaces throughout the city, that's a heavy, heavy lift. And maybe, hopefully, battery storage will become more commonplace in homes 20 years from now, and that will correct for that shift, I guess.
But Mayor, real quick, not even just in homes, but at the utility scale as well. So, when we're talking battery storage, it's not, yeah, it's on the utility scale, really.
Well, even just, you know, to highlight, you know, some of the things that might change, you know, right now in a lot of places outside the U.S., like, the cord at the charging station is not provided. So, you know, when you pull up, you pull the cord, you drive around with your cord, and you plug in. And so, you know, that's just one nuance and difference that might change. You know, the plugs aren't standardized yet, there's a few different out there. Tesla's seems to be growing in terms of adoption with the OEMs right now, particularly in the past six months, there's been a lot of change with that. And so, all this stuff is going to continue to evolve, you know, pretty significantly over the next, you know, five years. So, with all that being said, there's four main strategy areas, and then, within each of these, kind of a few potential options that you all can explore in terms of supporting, you know, EV adoption from a policy or funding perspective. And so, you know, just in no particular order, there's increasing access to home charging, particularly for multifamily, increasing public charging access, both just general public at parks and other places, but as well as workplace charging, supporting multimodal access to electrification, so as, you know, that continues to evolve, creating opportunities at charging locations and other places for, you know, e-bikes, transit, to support your multimodal goals here in the city and regionally. And then, you know, this last one too, I think, just on the last point about the market continuing to evolve, just being open to supporting, you know, other alternative fuel sources, you know, for grant opportunities like CNG or hydrogen or other things, you know, not all for personal vehicles, but medium and heavy-duty and commercial uses, being able to support that market as it evolves. I think some of those other fuel sources might be better positioned from a, you know, from the medium and heavy-duty side, and so, being able to support that need as businesses here in, you know, Mesa look to those fuel sources is an opportunity.
And Mayor, so if I may, so, this is just an overview of those strategies. If we were interested in further pursuing any of these, if you look in the backup material that was provided, there are some extensive options included with each one of these that are very, they're much more specific, and by any means not the end-all, but can give us some additional guidance into pursuing some of these strategies. So, just want to point that out.
So, just as one example of, you know, being able to take opportunities that are out there right now. So, we worked with you all to submit a federal CFI grant for public charging stations. And so, it total, it included 118 ports in the grant application. That was $15 million in total for the project. And just to give context, that 118 is 30% of the ports that are needed in any one particular year between now and 2030. But the stra- But the strategy was to locate some of them within the city's utility that were more neighborhood-oriented, around some of the multifamily locations, as well as, you know, close to downtown. There were two kind of fleet-oriented charging stations that we included that were lined up along 60 or where some of the businesses are located. And the idea there would be able to design those in a way that, you know, some of the, instead of having parking spaces for all of them, that some of them would have pull-through for some of the larger vehicles, that they could have a mix of fast-charging and level-two charging, and then just some straight fast-charging stations as well on areas to the east where there are current fast-charging gaps in, in the city. And so that's one, you know, way and strategy of being able to take advantage of those opportunities, particularly over the next five years with the infrastructure bill, that that money is going to be available for, for those kinds of projects.
Great, Jen. I do, but go ahead.
Okay. So these places for ports, are we talking about public and private land and hopefully it's existing parking spaces? We're not creating places for new parking spaces?
Mayor and Councilmember, so what we did here is we were as specific as possible with our data, but still give us a lot of wiggle room as to where exactly these things would go. So we didn't identify specific locations, site locations for these. Obviously, the lowest-hanging fruit would be already-owned land, that sort of thing. But we, we did not specify that. We left that open with, again, enough detail, substantial amount of detail behind it to show why these particular locations were of need, but nothing is set in stone.
Okay.
And it's, a lot of it's going to depend on our utility, SRP, what power is available to. That's really what's going to drive a good chunk of this without having to do substantial investment in those areas.
So I get the, the charging stations for our own fleet. I mean, that's essential, but the non-fleet stations, who's going to own and operate them?
So Mayor, you're talking about particularly to this grant that we're going after?
If we're successful in this grant, I mean, is there going to be somebody wearing a City of Mesa uniform that runs out and washes your windshield while you, you know, get your electric charged?
Mayor, let me tell you my ideal scenario here, what I was kind of thinking as we were putting this together. So there is, there's actually a 20% local match required for this grant. However, that match can be contributed by a private-sector organization. What we've seen, what I've already seen across the country is other entities who have applied for this anticipate that private-sector partner ultimately being totally responsible for both the installation, the upkeep, maintenance of those chargers. The public body is not in that anymore. They are more or less the pass-through for the dollars to enable this to happen. So what we would likely do is see what is the best partnership for us, what makes the most sense. It would in no, by no means require the city to be responsible for these long-term, unless that is the direction that was provided, of course.
And so the, I would just add that, you know, with the, the federal grant program, the only thing that they're requiring is that, you know, they have to be publicly accessible 24/7, that they have to provide a certain amount of uptime. And so you can incorporate those things into an agreement with a vendor to ensure that those requirements are, are met.
Well, the last time we were talking about our electric company, I, I looked at Mr. Brady and said, can we come up with some innovative ways to turn this into a profitable enterprise? Is there money to be made in electric vehicle charging?
I mean, the private sector thinks so, Mayor. I mean, there, there are, there are businesses around this. But I, I have never looked at this as a profit center for us by any means, but it's something that could definitely be explored because there are private businesses who believe they can make a profit off of this.
It can, it can be an economic driver and just I noticed some places where it stopped to charge is that you see other people who have also stopped to charge or whatever, and the coffee places, the lunch place, whatever, around that, there's more activity, I think, than normally. So it can be an economic driver for the surrounding property. And wherever we choose to have it, it should have that amenity to, because in 20 minutes, well, those are on the high level, you could do a full charge. But anyway, it's an economic driver to the surrounding property if it has the amenity.
Mayor and Councilmember, I totally agree. I mean, if, you know, at this point, somebody's got to charge. And, and the fact of the matter is, since there are gaps, you know, they got to search for a charger, they got to charge, they're limited right now today, they might as well be limited to charging in Mesa and then going to downtown or something.
If, I don't doubt that there's, you know, a profitable business model for, but why are there so many gaps? Why hasn't the private market come in? If it is, if you're saying you do see it as a potential profitable enterprise, why do we have so many gaps in infrastructure right now?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember, go forth. Excellent question. I think the, the fact of the matter is not everywhere is profitable.
Yeah.
So you can't just plump down a charger and then all of a sudden they're going to make money. Because again, as I said, the utility facilities are what's driving it. I mean, it could be, you know, millions of dollars to bring the requisite power needs to a particular area to do fast-charging. That's never going to be profitable, at least in the short term. Where it is profitable, you're seeing folks go. I mean, but I can tell you, I don't know, I mean, and, and other staff are having this very similar experience, we're being contacted by charging companies all the time who are saying, we're ready to go. I, I say, well, let's just go, you know, go ahead, start putting them in.
What are they asking for? They must be asking for something from us if they're.
Mayor and Councilmember, go forth. Honestly, they, they say, no, they're, they're not asking for anything, they just want to be, you know, us to be aware that they're out there. And I said, fantastic, you know, let's, let's get going, we'd love to have you in Mesa. I think the other thing too, though, is because there's some, some changes in port standards, there's some uncertainty still out there in the market, there's, there's a little bit of a hesitation. You're actually even seeing that in some vehicle sales right now. There's some hesitation to invest until there's a little bit more certainty.
Yeah, I know, I was going to ask about the need and if that has been, your, your forecasted trajectory for need out to 2030. I mean, is that based on the demand rate from the last year? Because what I'm reading is that, that's leveled off and decreased just a bit. Manufacturers are pulling back for various reasons, just a bit. So I'm just curious how you forecast it out. What was it based, I imagine, not just in the last year, the demand rate?
No, yeah. And it was also based on projections for the number of vehicles that are going to be produced by the different OEMs. So it's taking what they've committed. And actually, the, the projection number that we use kind of bumped it down. Because I think sometimes some of them are kind of a little optimistic in terms of, you know, how many vehicles they're going to be able to get out on the road. So we've kind of wanted to even kind of knock that down just a little bit as well. So it's a little more of a conservative look at it.
I, I don't know very much about electric vehicles, but is that a normal amount of ports per station, around 15-ish or whatever? Is that what that math is?
Mayor and Councilmember Spilsbury, I, well, was that the number that I, I said where there was?
I just did some math in my head. So if there's eight stations, 118 ports, that would say there's about 15 ports per station. Like, I don't know how many ports there are at a station, is what I'm asking.
For many of them that aren't Tesla, you have maybe two to four ports around Mesa right now.
Okay.
At any particular station, you know, like at a, at a hotel or something, they might put in, you know, two to four. At the, the Tesla stations, they're the larger ones, they have around, I think, like 16 or so, you know, ports. And they're quite busy. Like, if you ever want to just kind of go see what it's like, like, go to one of the Tesla supercharging stations. And when we, when I was here last time and spoke to some of you, like, after that, we went over and just talked to some of the people that were charging, and it was just, it was really interesting, particularly at the, the Tesla station. About half of the people that were charging, they were all, it was all full. It was like 3:00 PM on like a Tuesday or something, all full. About half of them were Uber drivers that were charging. So like Hertz has this program to like rent out Teslas to Uber drivers. And anyway, it's a whole thing, but they're there because it's one of the few places that they can, you know, go to charge or at least charge quickly. But even Uber drivers or non-Uber drivers, most of the people parked their car and either went over to the Walmart or to the, I think there was a Starbucks or it could have been something else, going to get coffee or something while they were waiting. So it was interesting just to go have those conversations and, and ask people why they're, were charging. A few people that we did talk to at some of the other stations, they don't have access to charging at their apartment. There was one person that was at a grocery store, I can't remember which one, he was there charging. And then there was one of the, I think it's Electrify America one that's out towards the, the east side of town. It's a fast-charging station with, I think, two ports there. But it was someone that lived in, I think Apache Junction, and that was the closest fast-charging station. And so he was there, he was just sitting in the shade next to the, outside his car while it was charging, and that was the closest fast-charging station for him. So that was one of the reasons why for this grant too, that we identified one of those stations out towards the, the east side of, of town, just so that it improves access not only for people in Mesa, but people to the, the east of Mesa as well.
Thank you.
Question, two questions on the, on, on the fast-charging or the charging on the public side, not all of them are made the same, right? Like, there's, I think Tesla just went in with a deal with Ford and, and maybe Chevy because they, they weren't able to charge at their ports. So can you explain a little bit on what's that kind of universal charging port? Or do you have to, I'm assuming you have to take an adapter or something?
Yeah.
So that's my first question. And then the state also go on the highways to reduce, I think it was, is it 30 minutes travel time or an hour?
It's 50. I think you're talking about the national electric vehicles.
The national, yeah, on highways.
Mm-hmm.
How's that overlap maybe on the 60 or the 101 or the 202? Because I think there's an effort statewide or nationally, right, on highways to, to have charging stations along the, the freeways or highway system, right?
Yeah, so Mayor and Vice Mayor, both great questions, because this is all part of the awareness campaign that we were, you know, we're talking with folks. These are all issues that kind of go into, do you want to get an EV or not? So the, the charging plug itself, yes, is not standard right now. There's not a universal standard, as Brad alluded to. However, as Brad also alluded to, somehow, some way, Tesla has all of a sudden inked all these deals with their NACS charger, which is a by far superior plug, by the way, than anything else that's out there. So that the OEMs are by 2025, I think there's only one or two major car manufacturers that have it inked a deal with Tesla yet. So by 2025, all of the cars that will be produced will be this NACS port. In the meantime, and even for existing cars that have the CCS port, which is really the, the other standard that was looking like it was going to be the standard, you will need an adapter. So one way or the other, there are adapters out there. It's not a huge inconvenience, you just need to keep it in your car. That'll allow you to charge anywhere by 2025. Right now, really, I believe still today, only Tesla vehicles can charge at Tesla superchargers. Those deals that have been inked are going to be starting to kick into effect next year. So I think Ford might be one of the first, you'll see Fords at Tesla superchargers. So that's where that's at right now. We still don't know, though, if that NACS ultimately becomes the US standard or not. There, there is a independent standards body that's trying to now make that the case, but over the next couple of years, we'll see how that plays out. Oh, my goodness, I blinked on your second.
On the highway system.
Yes, the highway, the, the NEVI program. So the, the NEVI program basically said every 50 miles, there needs to be access to fast-charging, at least four ports, if I remember correctly. And, but they are only allowed to be deployed by the states in, on highways or freeways designated as alternative fuel corridors. Unfortunately, there is not an alternative fuel corridor in Mesa. I just saw that the state is about to designate, however, the 87 just north of us and then State Route 24 just to the east of us as alternative fuel corridors, but still not in, not in Mesa. However, even if the 60 were to have been designated, it's every 50 miles, it could have bypassed Mesa entirely anyway. So that being said, we actually used that, I think, to our advantage in this grant application and said, we are not, Mesa is not positioned to be a beneficiary of the NEVI program. We're, we're out of that game. And so this is in part why we're, we're applying and feel like we should have a strong case for this funding.
Well, and I would just add, just to how those funds are, are being distributed. So there is a formula program, NEVI, that is sending money to the states, $5 billion nationally over the next five years to meet that standard of every 50 miles or, or less. But like Ian said, that can only be used on alternative fuel corridors, and it has to be used within one mile of an alternative fuel corridor as well. There's a, a separate bucket of money, the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant, that's 2.5 billion over the next five years. And that is not a formula program, that is, you know, competitive grant, and cities, MPOs, other quasi, you know, government entities are eligible to apply for those grant funds. Within that program, there is two splits of money. One, again, for the alternative fuel corridors, which since you do not have an alternative fuel corridor, you can apply for that bucket of money. So then you're left with the other portion, the non-AFC portion of the CFI grant program. So when we submitted this application, working with you all, you know, that's one of the things we highlighted, that it's like you all are the third-largest city in Arizona and you don't have access to like three-quarters of the, you know, potential funding, you know, opportunity for electric vehicle charging infrastructure.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you for the conversation, it's, it's electrified, you know, but.
You got there first.
Someone had to do it.
I know, you're so charging, you know, it's, it's like. But a couple of observations and a question. Number one, I was traveling in the southern states on I-10, and my son's in the military down there, and we stopped at a fuel station. And I think I've shared this with, there were 250 fuel pumps, and they were all packed with travelers on I-10. There were 10 Tesla charging stations over, I mean, this is a national, not a national, but a Midwest, southern states, large gas retailer, and they had the charging stations for Tesla. There were four vehicles charging at the Tesla. I paid no to the, you know, attention to it because obviously we're considering, you know, electric charging here in Mesa. So I thought, well, you know, based on what you're showing here, I mean, the demographics and everything is not switched. I mean, people are still using gas as the primary fuel source and electric vehicles are coming in. But I think for convenience-wise, you know, those, you're not going to get on our interstates without having a charging station every 50 miles, like you're saying. I mean, it's suicidal. I can also share with you, one of my mutual friends got in his car in Mesa, Arizona, and said, I'm going to drive in my Tesla to San Diego. So he is 40 miles west of Yuma when his, whatever, whatever happened. Anyway, popped up and said, you need to charge, you're running out of fuel. So he had to drive back to Yuma to the Costco and charge for like four hours while they shopped at Costco, which Costco loved it, you know. But anyway, it takes a learning curve with that. So I, I just, pardon? Yeah, you have to pay attention to that. A couple of observa, I was recently in a board meeting, and they said that there is a large national retailer that's going to start putting in fast-charging in all of their stores throughout the United States. And you might guess who that is. But they are seeing the advantage and the reason why to put charging stations at their stores. I see also maybe fuel stations, gas stations, becoming hybrid gas stations as they put in fast-charging at their gas stations to accommodate the traveler. And what probably stops most is the infrastructure and putting in the, the electricity for these charging stations. I mean, we can always put in the conduit and do everything and prep for that, and that's a big deal. But then the actual physical part of it, it's very expensive. As, you know, as the city, as we continue to watch this, I think we need to look at how the market evolves and what pressures are out there. But we do need to provide charging stations for our community and those that may not be able to afford home charging and/or other areas. And I guess my other question was, does Valley Metro, I said maybe for the Vice Mayor, do they have charging stations in their parking lots, you know, where you go and jump on the light? in their parking lots, you know, where you go and jump on the light rail or bus stops or anything like that? Do they have?
I don't think they currently have. It's been a discussion to have in the parking rides and.
Parking rides, yeah.
And the stations there, but I don't think we currently have any electric ports.
See, that'd be a good place to start. I mean, if you're going to invite people to use multimodal transportation and light rails and bus stops, that we should, they, if you have an electric vehicle and I can't afford to charge at home and I'm a multifamily complex, and there's, the chargers are all filled up with people plugged in, well, I know I can drive here, get on this transportation mode, and still get char, you know, charging and have a vehicle. So that's a couple of observations. But I think we cautiously should move forward and look at all of our opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there more to your presentation?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, my thoughts on this is, I think, this is happening, as Ian led with, you know, this is, we're not debating whether or not we ought to proceed with, you know, the world changing and adopting electric vehicles. That decision's been made for us already. So it is a matter of time, I think. I am, you know, I'm personally an enthusiast of the, of the technology. But I think the question is, what's the city's role? You know, the city, we don't go out and create gas stations. That's just not our role. But is there, what is our role in this situation? I think clearly we need to explore from a building code perspective, this obvious gap in permitting 200, 300 unit apartment complexes with, you know, three or four or zero charging stations. That's just, that doesn't make sense, knowing that those, those buildings are going to be there for a generation, and it's just a problem that's going to, we know is inevitable. And then many of us on this council and around the room can tell stories of having to adapt our garages in our single-family homes to this technology. So I think there are cities in the valley, Glendale, Ian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Glendale and others have seen the obvious, and they have increased the, their building code requirements for multifamily, maybe just putting the infrastructure in for it to be built out at a later time when the demand catches up. But then there's also, we need to have a streamlined way for people that are purchasing these vehicles to bring them home and, without going through contortions, be able to charge at home. And so particularly on new construction, it just makes sense to have a, require a 220 outlet in garages. And then we, and for those people that need to make a remodel in their garage at home, we need to have an expedited, clean, easy way to do that. We ought to be able to go onto the city's website, click a few buttons, and for little or no, you know, the city regulation accomplish that, because this is going to be happening, you know, tens of thousands of times in our community over the next few years. And then, so I think we need to challenge our planning department to look at best practices nationally and come back and say, we're making some changes in how we're going to permit multifamily and new single-family, and how we're going to be a, not part of the problem, and someone that needs to make, adapt their home garage when they purchase a new vehicle. To me, that's clearly the city's role. What it is beyond that is still a little fuzzy for me, other than the fact that I know we are a huge fleet operator. Think of the number of police cars and garbage trucks, and if you expand to the school district, buses. I mean, the public sector is huge fleet operators. And so I know we've wired our, one of our fire stations for our much anticipated electric fire truck. But again, we need, that just needs to be internally, our fleet folks need to figure out how we're going to accomplish that goal as well.
Mr. Brady.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, I think that's good direction. I think the thought should be, too, is, well, if you're doing it on the residential side, you require office buildings to do the same thing.
Right.
You know, or, you know, at some point you need to figure out what's the, how does it apply? So I think we need to encourage that. And then I think our role continues to be to help facilitate the infrastructure build out across, because what I hear more often, and even in our own electric utility, the biggest challenge will be the infrastructure and getting the right amount of power to all these locations. You know, when we do it, ones and twos, you do it at the library, you do it here, that's fine. But as the momentum grows, the bigger lift that people don't see is getting that power to these locations. So it's just something we strategically, we have to keep working on, that the cost is significant on that power side and getting that infrastructure there. So I think the sooner we kind of start building that into our conversation and our strategy, we can do that. And I know we've talked about that, we're looking at that in the public parking garages and areas like that. But I think it's broader, it's just kind of where people congregate, it's where they're going to park for some period of time. We probably ought to broaden that conversation. So we can have development services, especially the, on the building side, the building code side, look at what are best practices there might be for both residential and non-residential, and then bring back some recommendations to the council.
And Mayor, if I may, just to add on a little bit, too, just not to forget the true standalone kind of charging banks as well. We also, obviously, we want to make sure those are safe, those are accessible, and there is a process for folks to install those as well in the private sector. So that's just another area that we can look at for any streamlining as well. So you spoke about at home, at the office, but remember the standalone, think the Tesla superchargers, there's process they have to go through. We just want to look, we will, we have looked at, we'll want to continue to look at that as well.
Yeah, I think that's part of our lesson from changing our permitting for microtrenching and fiber optic. You know, the technology's changing, and as regulators and as permit suppliers, we need to change as well. Ms. Duff, was that?
Yeah, that was going to be part of my comment. I felt it was almost in the same light of how we see fiber throughout our city, and how it's going to be, it is a necessity now, but as we go forward, it is, becomes a decision of equity, too. One of the prohibitive things that we don't see now are, there really aren't inexpensive electric vehicles. There's a couple of models, but as that comes online and there's inexpensive, then we're going to say, people will not be, you know, who really want to use them, the charging was going to be an issue. And then there's that inequity of, I can't afford to install it, I can't, you know, I don't have that option where I live. And then I think on the horizon, you know, preparing for an electrified world as far as cars is definitely the direction we need to get on now, because it's going to be accelerated as new models come out on the market and the availability of charging. And it's definitely in line with our goals of the Climate Action Plan, is reducing the emissions that we have in our city and improving our air quality, which is a community priority, and this is a good step towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? So thank you, Mr. Brady. We'll look forward to maybe hearing more back from, not maybe, but hearing back from staff on how we can adopt some best practices and try to run to the front of this as fast as we can. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item 1B, is a presentation on the future development of the city property at the southwest corner of University Drive and Mesa Drive, known as Site 17, and council direction on the selection of the developer for the property.
Can you explain it? I didn't hear that you're not suggesting dimes for access, are you?
No. Hopefully, when we figure out battery technology, we'll also figure out the dimes. Welcome, Mr. McVay.
Morning, Mayor.
Jimmy, good to have you with us.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Jeff McVay, Manager of Downtown Transformation. And today, with his inaugural presentation in front of all council, is Jimmy Chiracchio, our Downtown Transformation Project Manager. Today, we are here to present, to give you an overview, summarize the proposals we received in response to our request for proposals for development partner for Site 17, as well as present a staff recommendation and take discussion and your council's direction on how you'd like us to proceed forward. Now, before, before I go into discussing, or we go into summarizing the actual responses, kind of wanted to give you a little background of how we got here today. Mayor, not the whole history, going back 30 years, but more, the more recent history, going back to 2019, when the city hired a consultant and did a very public engagement-oriented development of a concept plan for Site 17. Now, that concept was, was a visual representation of what was really a vision and guiding principles. So when we are looking at this, looking at the responses to the RFP, there are two elements that we are really looking at. First is what you see on this slide is, how is the, how capable are our development proposals? You know, are they able, do they have a track record of being able to provide successful developments? Are they able to be financially capable to deliver a development? And do they understand really what, and respond well to the vision and guiding principles that we have for the site? The second half of that is the concept itself, and how does that concept respond to the guiding principles? So you'll see, as we get into this discussion, that both of the projects, or both of the developers that proposed to us are capable developers. They both have financial capacity to pull this off, and we believe that both of them could do so. So much of what our analysis is based on is how did their proposal and their concept respond to the guiding principles that you see here today? And it really was about, this goes back to 2019. These are the guiding principles that were developed as part of that public process for development of a new urban neighborhood that had, had a variety, is vibrant and active, and it supported downtown, that had a variety of different building types, and it was really an accessible place to be. Another large component of the guiding principle is how complimentary it was to the surrounding neighborhoods. So we did receive two proposals. The first we received is from Caliber, and I will hand over to Jimmy to give you an overview, summarize the proposal as we received it.
All right, thank you. So for the project overview, you'll see they have, they're proposing a mixed-use project, multifamily, with a variety of different components to it. First off, definitely over 2,100 residential units spread out amongst the project in various buildings. The buildings themselves are aiming to be between one to eight stories, but they do have the potential to go higher, according to the proposal. About 350,000 square feet of retail, which would include restaurants, entertainment, shopping, grocery store, those aspects, film studios, flex office space, an extended stay hotel, and then multiple podium parkings and surface parking lots located throughout the project. All right, next slide. Here you see the breakdown of where they view things as placing. First up is the parks and open space. You'll see some linear green space, as well as a larger park that's kind of in the heart of the project there. The park would be surrounded by flex office space product surrounding it that opens up into the park. The mixed-use housing, retail, entertainment, student centers are scattered throughout the project as well. The extended stay hotel is at the east side on Mesa Drive, the film studios on the west side, and then other flex office spaces also scattered throughout. Next slide. Their phasing plan would include Phase 1, which is the, again, the heart and northeast kind of quadrant of the project, multifamily housing, the grocery store, which you see there, surrounded by the surface parking lot, park and podium, and then the office and the park all would be in that first phase. The second phase would be focused on the movie studios, which you see at the northwest, as well as just below Phase 1, there's housing there that would also include a student center. Phase 3 would, but up to the historic neighborhood to the south on Second Street, that would be more multifamily, retail restaurants, and more student center space. And then Phase 4 is the extended stay hotel, and also the potential for more multifamily housing. That would be similar, as they put in the proposal, similar to what they're doing at 29 West Main with the Zen City project. Next slide. Proposed terms, the land transaction, they would look at city maintaining ownership, and they would enter into a land lease while they develop the project. After that, they would like to enter into a G-plet. They would do four phases over nine years. Financing, a significant portion of the project would be funded through their Opportunity Zone Fund that they have, and then the remainder from private investors. And then as far as needed support, the G-plet would be a key piece, as well as all off-site utilities to the site, and then city maintenance of the green spaces. And I think that's.
G-plet is the city owns the property temporarily, and then it reverts back to the developer.
Right.
Is that, that's what we're talking about, when it says city maintains ownership and enters into a land, is it a land lease or is it a G-plet, or is it a land lease that becomes a G-plet?
Mayor, Council, so it's both. As is proposed, the, in order to have standing in the land, in order to be able to have the essentially ownership-ish rights to be able to go out and work with private third-party partners, the land lease would give them that standing in the land. However, they would like to have fee simple ownership at some point. So once we got to the point where it was time to develop the site, they would purchase the land from a fee simple based on a market appraisal. Following the completion of the development, then this land would be then revert back to city ownership through the G-plet. And I'll put the dollar in the acronym jar for Government Property Lease Excise Tax. For those, I think you're all well aware of it, but, you know, after they complete the project, they would essentially deed the land to the city. It would stay in city ownership for eight, during, for an eight-year period. During that eight-year period, they would be exempt from property taxes.
So, yeah, Mayor, we don't want to convey property to a developer until we know with high-level certainty actually seen the development take place, because we want someone, and we've unfortunately had multiple recurrences of this, where we could have easily have transacted the land to a developer, and it would have sat there being undeveloped. So we're using that as our.
I get it.
Our position, so that we make sure something actually happens. Once it's going to happen, to get the advantage of the G-plet, you do have to then.
Yeah.
Do that conversion, or maintain the city's ownership while they, what is it, a limited period of time?
Eight years.
Eight years, eight years, so they can do that.
All right, I get that. That's a good idea. Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
While you're on the topic, when we say property taxes, but we asked them to pay the school property tax, so let's be clear on that.
Yes. Councilman Freeman, through our, through our, up to this point, every G-plet that the city has approved has included an in-lug fee that is negotiated through the development agreement and is, is an equivalent amount of the school property tax that they would normally pay if the land were undeveloped during that eight-year period.
Yeah, thank you.
Which in this case. Is unique because they don't get any property tax off of it, because it's owned by the city.
Right.
So actually, the school district nets up.
Yes.
From the very beginning.
Yes.
So that's a little unique, whereas sometimes the private land property that goes into a G-plet, they've already been receiving the property tax from that, whatever, previously undeveloped property. And then it would theoretically come off the rolls for a period of time, but we, that's when we negotiate the in-lug. In this case, that we go down that same pattern, the school district actually nets up better than what they have today, just from the very beginning, because we're not, no, we're not paying property tax on this property today.
Yeah, I think it even nets up more once it's developed.
Oh, yeah.
Into its full potential.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Now, Mayor, Council, before I move into the selection committee's analysis of Caliber's proposal, first thing I want to say, and some of you've heard me say it before, and I'll say it again, is that what's very intriguing about this proposal is the inclusion of film studios and a very significant, very significant residential component. I've often said that the city invested $63.5 million into the ASU Mix Center, which has a world-class films, film school. And to be able to have some of the investment and economic opportunity that could come from having that film school and private film production in association with that is intriguing to us. Now, having said that, we did review this concept against the guiding vision and the guiding principles. This would result in a vibrant and active neighborhood, 2,000 and 2,100 residential units, 350,000 square feet of retail space. That would result in a vibrant and active space. The primary concern, however, with this is the good neighbor. One of the primary guiding principles coming out of our 2019 concept development was the transition between the Wilbur Historic Neighborhood on the south side. As proposed, there, the most significant and most intense part of the concept is on the south side and provide. the south side and provides, doesn't really provide that, that smooth transition between the two neighborhoods. Again, in order to achieve the densities proposed, it does require a, the, the use of a significant amount of the mid-rise apartment-style building types. This is, again, while the density is very intriguing, the guiding principles really did talk about a varied district. And when we talk about varied district, it was, the idea was that there was a variety of different building types, a variety of different housing options available to you, whether it be through rental, whether it be through townhomes, ownership along that line. This is a, is a intense, or a dense and urban environment being proposed. However, it does not have necessarily the variety of building types that the, the guiding principles envisioned. It is being developed with the pedestrian and bicycle in mind. It's very connected to downtown through those, those corridors of green spaces and very walkable environment. And it does recommend a variety of different rental options, whether it be affordable through market rate, which would be a very supportive downtown. Now, one concern related to the, the extent of the retail component, three hundred fifty thousand square feet, is whether or not that would be complimentary to the historic downtown retail core.
Jeff, how tall are the multifamily buildings?
The, up to eight stories. So, what you see on that south end, I believe those were shown as eight-story buildings.
And one question, what is a student center? What is considered the student center in a couple of places?
So, maybe, Jimmy, if you could...
Yeah, so with the film studios, they talked about having a education component to that as well, as media and technology education part of it. So, they, they proposed having multiple student centers in there to serve us, both those students and ASU students as well, so.
A quick question, on the film studios and the, not, not having a buffer to the historic neighborhoods in the south, can it be flipped? I mean, I know this is what they proposed, but is there, is there also that issue on the north side as a buffer as well?
With university being the north, north boundary, we didn't have nearly the same concerns with creating that buffer.
Okay.
Really, on the north side is how do we make a connection across university, which is a difficult street for pedestrians to, to be able to navigate.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. Just a question on the film studio, is that competitive with the mix over here at all? I mean, how do they blend together, and why would they, why would they even consider that when we have the state-of-the-art, one of the most world-renowned programs here, you know, that we were supporting as a city, and then now this one wants to build? So, so tell us some of the metrics behind that.
Sure. Councilmember Freeman, in addition to having, the Mix Center is, is educational, it is academic. It does have three large sound stages, but when it comes to true production, private production of films and media, the sound stages that they work with are significantly larger. So, while the Mix Center can accommodate some private use, it's, 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 it's real intended purpose is on the academic side. Layer that with the fact that in, a couple of years ago, the state just passed a, a tax credit for film production in the state of Arizona. There is a, there is an opportunity for Mesa and Arizona in general to be able to capture quite a bit of the activity that's, that is out there now with, around film production. There are places like Georgia that, that have really kind of put a lot of their economic development into film production, and it has been to great benefit. So, these would not, these would be more of a complementary to the fact that ASU is there and producing the talent necessary in order to lead to private film production in the state.
So, I, I think this would be the commercial aspect of, of private business creating film, right? And I think the student part is, there's a huge demand in the state for workers who can work on sets, and they're not necessarily educated like in, for ASU, they don't have to have a bachelor's, they just need to be the worker bees constructing sets, putting them together, doing that. There's a tremendous need in order to support the film industry, what we want to attract. I think that's part of what they're trying to get, is being able to have a workforce, you know, available, immediately available to those studios.
Well, in Phase Two, it said student center, so I really didn't know what that meant. Is it workforce housing for the movie production studio and, and others? I mean, there's retail, there's everything surrounding that, maybe that word needs to be changed from student. I don't know what you went through in the RFP for that.
They are, they are actually two, two separate components. There is a, a, a film production studios in which the Caliber is proposing partnerships with a, a production company that would be their partner for developing that site. The student center is, is, as, as proposed, would be a potential partnership with ASU as an expansion and, and complimentary to ASU's presence in downtown. Not, certainly associated with the Mix Center and what's happening at the Mix Center, but not necessarily just related to those activities. It could be beyond to other additional ASU investments in downtown.
Okay. And I think at some point, you're going to talk about master developer versus owner-developer, so I...
I'll just switch the slide.
When you get to that.
I'll just switch the slide, Mr. Freeman.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I had mentioned before, Caliber has a proven track, track record of successful developments. They come to the table with one of the largest OZ development funds in the country, probably the largest in the southwest, I guess. And so, that, to that, to that, from that perspective, we, we, the selection committee found them capable developers to be able to pull this off, that we found that they would have the financial capacity to pull this off. One of the things to Councilmember Freeman's question is, is one of the concerns that we did identify is that there is a specific request to be able to sell parcels off that did not necessarily fit the investment portfolio that Caliber has themselves. Now, that by itself isn't necessarily a bad thing, but our previous experience with master developers are that, that it can be somewhat of a challenge to be able to, to know and have certainty about what's going to happen on the site in the long term. In addition to that, we had mentioned the, the Film Production Center Studios, as well as the Student Center. Both of those do assume partnerships with third parties. At this point, we are not, we, we don't have those partnerships in place, and we can't speak to whether or not they are in, in tow with Caliber on the site. Now, before I move on to the next proposal, I'd like to take a pause and see if there's any further questions on this before.
I, I do have a question. I think I've always looked forward to this becoming a, a sustainable neighborhood that, you know, rivals other neighborhoods in Mesa, where people identify, you know, hey, I live in Dobson Ranch, I live in Eastmark, you know, it, it's, it's a place that people are proud to call home, and it, and it contributes, you know, it, we do need more people in downtown Mesa. And I am very sympathetic to our need for more affordable housing, but I also want there to be housing diversity in downtown Mesa. And right now, we have a fair amount of affordable housing across the street. We have El Rancho around the corner, well, well, across the street, we have Escobedo around the corner, we have El Rancho down the street, we have La Macita Encore, you can, it's a short walk. So, we check that box in this neighborhood. Now, I, I know there's an argument to be made that historically, this was a workforce housing neighborhood. I get that. But I think what we don't have in downtown Mesa is, is market rate. Well, we have some market rate, multifamily, we don't have any real for-sale market rate. We don't have anything high-end of market rate. So, I have no doubt that Caliber can do this, they have the financial resources, but I think we just have to ask ourselves, do, do we want, you know, eight stories of affordable housing at this location? I know it's a mix, it's going to be market rate and affordable, but that, I just need to get over the concept of what do we want to accomplish here? Is it, is it more of the same, or do we want to try to entice some diversity in housing? Something that's more for-sale, more market rate or above-market rate?
And Mayor, Council, I, I want to make sure not to over, overexaggerate the proposal's addition of affordable housing. This, as proposed, would be a, a vast majority market-rate rental-type housing. There would, there is...
What's the mix that's proposed?
There wasn't a proposed mix. There was, it was more of a generalized statement that this can accommodate affordable and market-rate housing. But with Caliber, with conversations we've had with Caliber, this would be primary market-rate housing. They also did note that there is the potential for some for-sale units, but it is, again, it, it's not evident that that is until we know, that wouldn't be evident until they know whether or not the market itself would support it. So, it'd be contingent on them continuing down and to do market studies, it'd also be contingent on whether or not the city made that a condition of any kind of future development agreements.
And I, I, I think we want to try to nurture a film industry in Mesa that would be complimentary to the ASU investment. But we recently toured Burnaby, Canada, that has a thriving, they're our sister city, and, you know, many hundreds of millions of dollars have been spent on building production studios there. And so, I, I see the impact on, that, that industry has on that economy, and it's significant, and I aspire for Mesa to get there. But I, it, it's difficult to say, here's where we're going to build a studio. You know, the studios come and tell us where they're going to build a studio. And typically, it's in a warehouse district, because, you know, you, you don't need a strategic location for a film studio, you need a big tilt-up concrete, you know, building that you've soundproofed. And there's less expensive places to do that than at the corner of University and Mesa Drive. So, I just, I, I, on the other hand, love to have, I mean, if, if ASU's, you know, film students could walk across the street and, and, you know, have part-time jobs, and we have adjunct professors that are walking across the street to teach, and then build, you know, film a TV series, you know, in the afternoon, that's, that sounds like an amazing environment. So, I'm open to the idea of this being a film studio, that, that being a part of it. But I think it's just difficult for us or Caliber to say, here's where we're building a film studio. And grocery stores seem almost as, as evasive as film studios. I think, I think it's difficult to just say, here's where we're building a grocery store. I, I would have more confidence if, you know, MGM was walking in saying, yes, we'll do this if you, if you want us there. Because I think, I think that's the point that you made a moment ago, that this is kind of an aspirational plan without some secured partners to, to flesh out this map.
I, I believe, in our evaluation, Mayor, that's a fair point.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm also concerned with the, the studios. There's a lot of large trucks and, that go in and out around production of film studios. And wanting to make this a feel of a transition of a neighborhood area, that would be relatively difficult. However, I do love the idea of film studios and being in a short distance of what's going on with ASU, I think it's great. I'd like to suggest, I know there's the DES Building, that's a large building that's tall, that needs to, a buyer. We do have some public land south of Maine, some city-owned properties. I think there's some other options to accommodate, I don't know, I'm not trying to propose the solution on that. I'm just saying there, I would love to have it, but not necessarily right here. That the film studios within, working with ASU, but it, this is too heavy of an impact, I feel, when we're, want to connect this, to be a living area connected to downtown, and it feels very industrial or commercial in a way, being almost a campus for the film studio. Thank you.
But yes, I'm sorry, Lee Lisa, if I could just insert, I, I don't mean to throw cold water on this, but I, I think I, I would love to hear from Caliber, here's our, here's letters of interest from movie studios and from grocery stores, saying, yeah, we, we think this could work, and maybe it's not a contract, but it's at least an indication that this is more than just a concept. Sorry.
I was at, that kind of, would, are both of the responders, would it be appropriate if we heard from them, just a, kind of an overall, here, here was the vision for the space, here, here was the purpose and the cohesive plan? I don't know if...
What's the process, Jeff? How is this beauty pageant going to hold?
Well, we have one more to present to you before, before, so you can have a comparative analysis as well. Our intent would, we have a recommendation for Council, our intent is to request Council's direction as to whether you'd like us to move forward with either of those, and if that is the case, that we would then take the next step. And ideally, come back to you with either a, a letter of intent or a memorandum of an understanding that, that really gets down and starts to negotiate those very, very high-level but very important business terms that are fundamental to whether either of these proposals are even, are even potential related to things like the purchase terms, the infrastructure improvements necessary, timing, and then just the minimum development expectations as well. So, there are certain things at a high level that we would want to flush out before we went into and had, and before Kelly had to, to spend too much time negotiating a, a full legal document, there are our primary business terms that we would want to be able to flush out and bring back to Council before we went to the next step.
So, but to answer the question, Mayor, Council, the plan today, and it can change, right, was to provide you the summary that the staff has put together for these two proposals, and then today to give direction. Now, if Council would like an opportunity to have, you know, we did not prepare or let the applicants know that would happen today. So, if that's a, something that you would like to do before making this decision, I mean, that's just a conversation we could have a little bit later today, but it's not planned for right now. If that's what you would like, we could do that, or otherwise, the plan today was to give you the summary and the recommendation from the staff today, and then to select one of the two that we would proceed with, going through the, the initial steps of establishing some kind of MOU or, MOU or something, letter of intent or something like that, Kelly, so we could get to a final agreement. But that's, that's the plan, that was the plan today, but again, we want Council, we've been through, we've been in this rodeo several times, right? And so, I don't know what the word is, how to get it right, because we are in a transitional time of the economy, let's say. And so, I think that the idea is to get the right planning, the right mix, and send the right message, and then develop an agreement with a future developer.
And I guess that's why I asked, because, you know, a building here, a building there, a green space here, you know, that will eventually come, but to me, it's a little bit important to understand that vision...
Sure.
From the, the respondent, because, you know, what, we're just looking at, this building is placed here, and this, you don't really truly get a good sense of what they were trying to do in, in creating this community. That's my thought, but I, I can be outvoted on that.
And Mayor, Councilmember, go for it. We did not share the full responses with Council, we, we tried to distill it down and, and provide a summary and recommendation, but if you would find it of interest and helpful, the, the full responses from each of those, it is, there is an entire section devoted to your understanding of the vision and your, and how you, and describing their vision for the development. We'd be happy to, to share those full responses with the, the full Council if that's something of interest.
My, my suggestion is, let's do what's on the agenda today. Personally, I'm feeling right now a little rushed, but maybe I'll be, feel differently at the end of this presentation. But, so why don't we get through the presentation and then decide if we think we need more time with this or not?
I have one more question on, on, on the grocery store and surface parking, is there a reason for that? Because, reason, another observation, sometimes in downtown Phoenix, like the Frye's Grocery Store, is underneath a high-rise. And so, you know, we're trying to reduce our heat index and footprint, and is surface parking needed, and could we, could they not reconsider? I know it's expensive, but I'm not really warm and fuzzy about all of this right now. But anyway, your thoughts on the surface parking for a standalone grocery store?
Councilmember Freeman, I, I think to some degree, well, well, our review, as, as evaluation committee does note, that, that surface parking isn't ideal. I think there is to be some recognition of, of where we are in time, and, and a grocery store at this point in downtown Mesa is, we are, we, I don't think we could support a, a grocery store as the first, first floor of a high-rise building that has underground parking. This would be, this would be a location that, a grocery store that would serve a much broader area than just that downtown corner at University Mesa Drive. It would be my grocery store if it were here. And most likely, I'm not going to walk from, from Evergreen there, so having convenient parking is probably what, it would make it attractive to have.
But you do your e-bike.
Well, it's, the, the cargo bags I have can't do a full week's worth of groceries. Well, the cargo bags I have can't do a full week's worth of groceries.
Then in urban core--
We're trying to make walkability.
I don't know that, in my mind, my thinking, when I've been to downtowns, and let's not compare ourselves to downtown Phoenix, okay? Because that's like a different universe. But I think a smaller niche, you know, limited, whatever, small grocery store would have a huge opportunity, right, Chen, for this area, not a Fry's supermarket, right? Because even Fry's is not, they're not building small ones anymore, right? They're shutting down Fry's and building, I don't know, the equivalent of Walmarts. That's what they're, right now, that market is competing with Costco, Walmarts, these super Fry's. But I think in a downtown core, you're looking for something where somebody's going to go to that store, it's not, it's not like going to Costco. It's coming and just, it's a much smaller meeting than needs. So, but again, this is going to happen over like nine years. So I think we've got to set the tone and the high vision for these developers, because it's not like we signed this agreement and six, nine months later, they're going to be under construction for the entirety of it. We've got to figure out what that balance is, is a master plan. We need to think about this as the master plan, I think.
And Mayor and Council, if I can jump in in terms of just process, so what we're looking for today is the direction for, for the finalists, but thereafter, once a finalist is selected, whether it's today or at another council meeting, we come back with more deal points under a memorandum of understanding that we would enter into with that particular developer. And then we start actually negotiating the documents that would go with that, which would equally come back, like a development agreement or a G-Plat. So more details will keep coming forward as the process would continue.
And just one last thing on the grocery store. The grocery store or grocer of some scale is the only, since 2019, when we were doing our public process, is the only thing that everybody agreed upon for happening at this site. So if, if we truly are, if we truly, as a community, desire to have a grocery store, I think that there, we do probably need to give some consideration to making that lift a little bit easy. And a surface park grocery store is going to be a much easier, a much, a much easier lift to see happen at the site today, rather than 20 years from now, when you might have a level of intensity that would support something that is built into a much larger, first floor of a much larger development.
This kind of goes to my point. I think grocery stores tell us where they're going to go. Movie studios tell us where they're going to go. So if they were coming in and saying, will you let us build this here? That's an easier discussion to have than kind of this pipe dream that we're going to take all the things we want and put it on a piece of paper, and it's magically going to happen. Maybe I'm being pessimistic, I'm sorry. Yeah.
We've got to start somewhere. A vision is a great place to start, and if we can stick to our vision, that's awesome.
So are you ready to go into the next applicant?
I would love to be able to have Jimmy give you an overview of cul-de-sac.
I'm going to declare a 10-minute recess. We've been in 90 minutes now, so let's reconvene at a quarter after nine, okay? All right, thank you for that needed break. So Jeff, please proceed.
Mayor, we'll go on, and Jimmy will give you an overview of the cul-de-sac proposal.
All right. So again, with cul-de-sac, they are also looking to do multi-family, mixed-use development. They describe theirs as car light. I'm sure most of you have read the stories or seen their project in Tempe, which is a car-free community. This one, they dub as car light. The focus on it is on pedestrian and bicycle, bicycle access to transit options and shared vehicles. They also put a large focus on activated open space in the project. Here, you'll see, they have about 1,000 residential units that they're shooting for. That would be two to three stories tops for the buildings, a fair amount of commercial space, 25,000 to 50,000 square feet for small grocer, coffee shops, and other amenities that would service the neighborhood, retail, residential amenities, like a gym, things like that. And then 30% to 50% open space and green spaces throughout the project, which we'll get more into in a little bit. And then 800 parking spaces to service the community, and that's the car light aspect. Next slide. With the layout here, the, at the southernmost edge along Second Street, they have town homes, two to three-story town homes. They do propose putting a for-sale aspect to these. Some will be in-unit garages, and some will be live-work units as part of those. The next phase in the middle strip there is courtyard-style apartments. These will be multi-family, a little higher density. They plan to reflect the scale of the neighborhood, the historic neighborhood to the south with those as well. And then at the top level, you have the mid-rise apartments, which are a much higher density, those on the university side, so they'll be slightly taller, and a variety of unit types inside, and then ground floor retail and amenities, and the garage there as well. I think, Max, I think they were planning just to go to three or four stories, right?
He said five stories.
Five stories, sorry. Five stories. The retail aspect, mostly in the red there, you'll see they have retail kind of scattered throughout, a retail row in the middle. Then, as I mentioned, is a small grocery store, nothing big, but something just to service the neighborhood, bike service shop, things like that as well, and coworking space in there. The structured parking will be wrapped with housing and retail units. It'll be available to the residents, as well as retail patrons and visitors, and car share. The green space, they see a variety of public and semi-public spaces. They plan on the architecture using the buildings themselves to help shade the walking paths. They intend to have a dog park and also food court, food truck parking for activating certain areas as well. The mobility hub is roads and pathways that are prioritizing pedestrians and bikes throughout the area. There will be pickup and drop-off points for ride share and deliveries, and then car share access throughout. And then the house, the last point, the low-scale housing and green buffer to the south is to create a comfortable transition to the historic neighborhood. Next slide. The phasing plan, they do plan to do three phases over 10 years. Again, on the southern edge there, the number one will be the town homes. That will have immediate activation as part of that. They plan from day one of construction to start putting out different activities, events, farmers' markets, anything like that, to just start bringing attention to the area and start utilizing the space. You'll see the lower-density, five to 10 dwelling units per acre, and we mentioned that there'll be live-work units, combination live-work units and regular town homes with parks. Phase two will be that courtyard product in the center. There will be some retail amenities here, like the small grocer and coffee shop, and then that'll have that middle density. And then at the northern edge will be the final phase, which is the full commercial with a variety of restaurants, you know, bike shop, the coworking spaces and things within there as well. And for their proposed terms, they're looking at a fee simple structure. We'll do a third-party appraisal and work from there. As mentioned, three phases over 10 years. For financing, they're looking at about 50% to 60% debt, with the remainder coming from equity from their private partnerships. And then as far as city support, they would be open to the idea of a G-Plat. They're not 100% committed to doing it, but they said they're open to the idea. They would look for expedited rezoning and entitlement, which would include parking reductions for the project, and then improving the public streetscapes and pedestrian pathways, and then also helping support any kind of transit connections and ways to get people to light rail stations easier, so they don't have to walk the full 30 minutes or whatever it would take them to get from the northernmost part, if there's ways to do autonomous shuttles, things like that, that they would want to look at, micro-mobility aspects and those pieces, so.
Before you leave this slide, compared to the, to the other slide, where we, that had a land lease, you know, for a period of time, that gave us a ripcord in the event some things weren't going well, and we wanted to re-center the project, how do you feel about this proposal, where we just, we sell them the property and it's their problem?
Mayor, Mayor and Council, I don't think that we would ever enter into an agreement, a purchase agreement, in which we sell the property before we had all the firm commitments and understanding of where the project's going. In our, in our last effort to do so, we were not going to sell a single parcel for development until that development was inked. So I imagine the, we would be proposing to council a purchase structure similar to that, where we would have a development agreement that would give them the rights necessary in order to be able to move forward with the planning and entitlement of the land, but we would not sell the land until, until it was such time for them to actually put a shovel into the ground.
And you mentioned they're interested in G-Plat, but they're, I mean, do we care? I mean, usually people are begging us for G-Plats. Why are they being--
If someone wants to do without a G-Plat, they're not going to have a problem from us.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. There's no, there's no advantage from our perspective that it be a G-Plat.
The advantage that we try to use with G-Plat is not just for the benefit of the developer, but also we try to use that to create enhancements in the project that go above and beyond what they normally might want to do, so they can take that advantage to put in amenities, whether it's parks or landscaping or something in the public space, is, we can use that as a leverage. So sometimes while they look at as advantage for their overall financing, we also try to use it as an opportunity to increase the quality of development. So I think we just keep it on the table as something that we would look at into the future.
And Mayor, I like to win some bonus points with the city attorney's office. So the other, the other aspect is that the recent case law has really kind of made it so the advantages of a G-Plat aren't nearly what they used to be. It used to be that we could just compare the tax benefits that would come from a development and the jobs created through that development as sufficient enough public consideration for the tax incentive. Now, we have to look, as Chris had mentioned, we have to look well beyond that. So we look into enhanced infrastructure, you know, parks and open space. In some cases, we even have discussed, you know, cash donations to the city that can go into a housing trust fund or something along that line. So considering a G-Plat, it comes with, with a few more hooks than it used to, and so it may be that it is actually more attractive to move forward without a G-Plat than it would be with.
Mayor and Council, when we're looking at the G-Plat, we need, the city will need its own direct consideration that we're getting. So it can't be indirect, like Jeff had mentioned, that, you know, you'll get more taxes because we're building this. There has to be something that the city receives in return for entering into that G-Plat separately. That's what the case law has recently come out with.
But would you say this is maybe a little bit riskier with the 50%, 50% to 60% debt and, you know, reliant on kind of what the market's doing? And I assume they've, from what I've read, they, how many, how many developments have they done? I know of two.
They have, they have their Tempe. Councilmember, go forth. I'll answer your first question first.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
50%, 60% debt is still a pretty low ratio of debt, from what we're used to seeing. 25% equity is not uncommon, and with the remainder being debt. So from a, from a financial structure perspective, I don't find that to be much, any riskier necessarily. Now, related to their, what they have accomplished, the team that is part of cul-de-sac has had a real estate development background beyond cul-de-sac. They coalesced and come together under cul-de-sac. They're currently under construction in Tempe with their first phase and first residence now living there. They have a, a deal, and they are working towards, I think, starting their second project in Atlanta on the Beltway, the Beltway around Atlanta. This would be, if we're, if we go forward with this, this would be their third cul-de-sac for, within the nation. Okay, so going into the analysis of their, their proposal as it is compared to the vision and guiding principles from 2019, again, this is a very different than the last one we saw, but it is, again, would, with 1,000 residential units, with a, within a very walkable environment. We do feel that this would create a vibrant and active neighborhood. The one thing that is, is important to note is that they conscientiously or purposely created a low-rise, two-story town home transition to the neighborhood to the south with a, with a green buffer along the streetscape. Again, this concept includes a variety, as Jimmy described, it includes a variety of different building types, from town homes to court, air departments to mid-rise to commercial space. It does include a reasonable amount of neighborhood-serving retail that would support the neighborhood and not necessarily detract from the commercial, the historic core of downtown. It is, again, with, with the green space, the pedestrian, both, this, this Caliber's and cul-de-sac conscientiously included, you know, green spaces, pedestrian connections and streetscapes that are, will encourage pedestrian and bicycle activity. Outside of the, the guiding principles of mission, again, as we had mentioned before, we believe that both of these developers are capable, and we believe that cul-de-sac is capable as well. One, one distinction with the cul-de-sac proposal is that they are proposing to be the, the owner, developer, and operator of this project for, for the long term. So then they would entitle it, build it, and then once it is built, then they would also be the leasing company for the apartments, or the, the real estate company for any for-sale product. The, they also have provided us letters of support from Tempe Valley Metro and Sunbelt Holdings. That is in relationship to their experience on the Tempe cul-de-sac project. Now, going into the evaluation committee's recommendation, and during the break, I think it's important, Councilmember Summers and I were discussing--
I'm sorry, Jeff. Before, I'm anxious for you to do that, but I just have a question that I can't get off--
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Let's, I did not stop and pause and ask for, sorry, Mayor.
One of the, we toured the, the Tempe cul-de-sac project a month or two ago, and I know it's, it's very transit-oriented development. I mean, as you know, there, there's zero parking, I think, a little or no parking. So the assumption is that people who live there will utilize transit.
Yes.
And I know that's, this is trans, you know, car light as opposed to zero cars, but still, this, it seems like this development is, is there because it's within walking distance of a light rail station. And in the past, it seems like there's been implied that, well, hey, the city might need to help us, you know, further make that connection with some sort of autonomous shuttle or something along the lines. Just to strengthen that connection, if you have 1,000 units and 800 parking spaces, you know, that's, that math doesn't work unless people are using transit, right?
Correct.
So is there anything in this proposal that, that creates an obligation on the part of the city to kind of help facilitate the connection to transit?
Mayor, Council, yes. One of the, one of the key, and I'll go back to our needed city support. It's one bullet point that just says improve streets, public streetscapes for pedestrian and bicycles, but that, that one bullet point has a lot packed in there. It's not only looking to the city to be a partner and helping with, with the infrastructure as it relates to the site, but how is that site connected to light rail and transit? So there would be an expectation that there would be some level of city support for improving the streetscape connections to Main Street into light rail. And again, going back to the previous discussion, one of the reasons why we would want to take that next step to an MOU is to really, that's, to me, and to the developer, that would be a fundamental deal point, that if we can't come to agreement on those terms, then we can't come to agreement on the broader project.
All right, thank you.
Before I go on to our recommendation, I will, is there any other questions on the cul-de-sac concept? All right. So, based on, and, and again, I go back to, during the break, Councilmember Summers and I were discussing this, the recommendation that the, the evaluation committee has is for moving forward with cul-de-sac. As it relates to the, the vision and the guiding principles that were put into the RFP to respond to about creating a new urban neighborhood that is complementary downtown with a very district and is a good neighbor to the existing development, cul-de-sac checks off more boxes than, than the Caliber proposal. Now, I'm saying that with the, with the full understanding that what Caliber has proposed to us is very intriguing, and I would like for us to be able to still, there's an opportunity that I don't, I would not want us to be able to, would not want us to lose, but as it relates to what was put in the RFP, Caliber's response, I'm sorry, cul-de-sac's response was, was closer to what the city has envisioned up to this point. As Councilmember Summers and I were discussing, though, that is a vision that was from 2019. And one of the reasons why we are including this discussion with council is to confirm that that is a vision that you want us to continue to move forward with. And so with that, I'll take it to our next and final slide that you've been waiting for, is the overall discussion and direction on, on whether or not you would like us to move forward to the next step with one or either of these proposals, or whether or not you would like us to, to maybe retool and, and take another direction.
Ms. Billbury. And then Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. So the cul-de-sac has about half the amount of units that the Caliber was suggesting. Maybe before last week's housing presentation, I would have liked that, and then now I hear that we, you know, have this huge-- that. And then now I hear that we, you know, have this huge surplus of housing apparently. So I'm just wondering, I don't remember if in the presentation last week, it was talked about as far as like areas of the city, right? So when we're looking at the downtown area, are we still in a housing shortage or we have a surplus? I mean, I think we all say we need more people downtown, we need more people downtown. So like the 2,000 seems, I like the intensity of the 2,000 versus the 1,000 because I like that that would get a lot more people down here. I think when you go to other cities our size and you look at their downtown areas, like we have potential to have this really, really dynamic downtown area. And I think more people do that. And if we're going to build on here, then why not do a double the units? And so that's one part of it. Just initially, when I looked through this presentation, the caliber one just seems much more exciting to me as far as the film studios and the tie-in with ASU and student housing potentially. I, talking about the ASU downtown area, didn't really take off until there was some student housing is what I've heard. And so, so I guess that's another question, is there any tie-in with the Cul-de-sac to the ASU property or like compatible uses there? Anytime Site 17 has gotten brought up over the years, it's always like this technology focus, that we want this technology campus or like medical or like something like that. And then this is just, to me, I, I like things about both of them, but the cul, this Cul-de-sac one feels really safe. It feels really, I don't know, it just doesn't excite me like the potential of what the site could be. But I, I look forward to hearing what everyone else has to say. So I don't know. Did you pick up on my questions there? I, I was super clear.
I've got one that I know I can.
Okay, okay.
And if, and if, if there's more that you'd like me to respond to, I'll do so. But relating to the, the housing in downtown in general, when we look at the available housing stock and need, that's looking at it from a city scale. I will, I will be your advocate, I will never stop advocating for more housing in downtown. As a, of developed square miles in the city, downtown has the lowest population density of any square mile. And if we are going to have a truly successful downtown, it has to have residential. So that is why when we, going back to 2019, one of the key vision elements was it has to have a significant residential component because we, we have for, for too long been trying to import people to downtown versus just having them here from, from a base level. So to that point, it is, it has always been a big focus on residential. And I would disagree that, that we have an oversupply of housing in downtown, even though, you know, since 2015, we're up to about 1,400 units that, that have been constructed or currently under construction. But if you look at the absorption rate of those units, it's rapid.
Yeah. And then, so then just I'll help you.
Up there, tied to ASU.
With the tie-in issue. Yeah, so you're good. I wasn't that bad.
We have, we have not had any discussions with Cul-de-sac as it relates to tie-in to ASU. And their proposal did not, did not include any direct references to tie-ins to ASU.
Okay.
I think it mentioned, actually, it did mention pedestrian pathways, like previews pedestrian connections to it, but that was the extent they mentioned ASU.
Okay, because I, I personally would love to see some tie-in there.
Well, before we move off of that point, I mean, there's a difference between saying student housing or using the words ASU and film studio and grocery store and then having attached to the back of the proposal, hi, I'm ASU and I'm part of this. Or, you know, that, that, these are aspirational relationships at this point, not we have a deal with ASU to do this, this and this.
You gotta start somewhere.
Well, wishing is not a plan. I guess is my question. And I, and I'm not trying to be critical.
If I have an opportunity for them to come in, I don't know. I, I don't know how it works. I mean, it just seems like maybe the, if the opportunity was there, then they would come in. I don't know.
But I would hope that they would meet with ASU and they would take the bait and say, oh, yeah, well, you know, we need that. And if you'll do that, we'll do that with you.
Yeah.
But, but, I'm sorry, Mr. Summers.
No, I, I'm just gonna bounce off your comments, Mayor. What it feels like is, is that Cul-de-sac answered the question and Caliber ripped the question up and said, here's what a vision could be. And, and I like the pictures. I, I do. I think having the density in downtown is, is going to help the businesses that are down here. It's something that we've been looking forward to. I'm a little wary when it, because it, it does feel like by adding studios and they haven't, it sounds like they haven't talked to anybody that's done a, that builds studios, that they're kind of showing us what we want to see.
Councilmember Summers, I will, I will, I will say that in our early discussions with Caliber, they do have, they have had multiple discussions with developers of studios and, and former executives of, of, long-term executives of NBC. There is a, one of their, one of their consultants is in the room with us today that has provided them some, some of the, the background on what production.
Some potential that this could happen. Because I, I've, I've seen a lot of plans in the past that have pretty pictures and that the ultimate build-out doesn't quite meet the vision that was set up. And I would like to have a little bit more assurance that we could reach that vision. But I'm also, I also wonder if we have to have a little bit more discussion on this, which way we go, because we have two very different plans. And I think if we decide that what Caliber has created is the type of vision that we want to move forward with, then we probably need to give Cul-de-sac the opportunity to respond to that because they, they responded to what we asked for. Whereas Caliber said, I think we can take this to a new vision and those. So we might have to go back and say, all right, here, have a discussion with council about what do we want this to be? Do we want it to be high-density with some job growth and commercial? Or do we want to go back to creating a neighborhood out of this, which is what we have on the table here? And then have them go back, relook at their plans, maybe bring some partners in that said we would be interested in helping Caliber or Cul-de-sac meet that vision, and then we can make an informed choice of which way we want to go.
So can I, yeah, where did the film studio concept come in for them? Do you know, I mean, are, because you say this, this is based off a 2019 council direction, which I assume was, what you said, of basically a vibrant, activated, walkable pedestrian community? That was what the direction was for 2019?
We, Councilmember, go forth. We did about a six-month concept envisioning process in which we engaged, and we did a, quite a bit of public engagement of the surround, of the city as a whole. We invited the entire city, but of the surrounding neighborhoods. And that was how that concept was developed. It came with the vision. We, as I always say, we, we have tabbed pretty pictures in order to get people excited, but what really mattered out of that six months of planning was the, the vision and the guiding principles that were incorporated into the RFP.
Of a grocery store.
And a grocery, and yes, and a grocery store.
I mean, there was, I, I don't, any, anytime I've seen stuff about the neighborhood, they can't even decide what they want. So they, that's what's hard. It's like they all just, they all agree on a grocery store, but not much else. I, I mean, you guys would know better than me, but what I've seen from posts on Facebook and stuff is they don't even know exactly what they want.
I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna say, the prior iteration to this was a pretty dense development from the prior concept that we had. And we had some really sound guiding principles when they went out in the neighborhoods. We met, put together a great foundation so that you could give a, the RFP out there. And then we've got really two, to me, after the prior one and the one before, this is two different concepts here. And I've always valued the outreach to our neighborhoods. And personally, I, I think that as we move forward, that will need to be done, obviously, neighborhood outreach and get some discussion from them. But I'm, I'm still, I don't know where I really want to be at moving forward right now. I like, out of the two, because I think Cul-de-sac maybe could up some of their density components on it and have more people here and still have the walkability necessary. So I see what they're trying to do. To me, I don't think they're quite there yet, but I like them as a company because they're an owner developer. Okay, thanks.
I can't remember who walked through the Tempe Cul-de-sac with me. I think there were some other council members there. And it was.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Brady was there. It's a very desirable neighborhood. There are people lining up to, to, to go move in there, but it's also, to me, it's very, it's crowded would be the word I would use to describe it because it's, it's like two, three-story walk-ups, but it's in, pretty intense. You know, it, it feels very dense, but it's beautiful. It's kind of high concept, high design. Everything's very artsy. Everything's beautiful. I can see why people want to live there. And so what I heard, Jeff, is that they were saying, this is not what we would do in Mesa. We, we would do a Mesa version of this, which is less crowded. So I, I know we're, we're given your conflicting, I, you know, goals.
Well, Mayor, I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, the Cul-de-sac, I think, market, or at least the units that, that we saw in Tempe were, one, two bedrooms, right? Very little more than that. And I think we talked about in Mesa.
Townhomes.
That was a conversation, maybe ones with more, more of a mix closer to the high, the three, you know, two and three bedrooms versus just a single bedroom with a workspace. So we were just, I think we were trying to make that feel. So I mean, the challenge you have is, right, we want more residential downtown. But again, if you want to achieve the goals, if the goal is of the council policy to elevate the market level that you're going after, sometimes that density doesn't always, you know, there's a balance right there, being trying, creating more density, but also trying to achieve the higher level of market rents too. So you, there's, there's somewhere in there, there's a sweet spot, but if you get them too stacked, too high, that's not necessarily, you know, a higher end-market product necessarily, unless it has a lot of amenities. And, and I think that's one thing the city we may want to look at too, is I think a lot of these successful developments have to be, to me, I, way I look at it is not where the stance in the market, but is it sustainable? Is it going to be through the years? Because that's the thing I worry about the most when you get into these high densities, is maintaining them and keeping them up generations from now, because we struggle with that in some of our properties, so.
Yeah, I have that concern, but, and again, I, I know I have conflicting goals here because I would like to see more density, transit-oriented development, and it's a different lifestyle than we're used to in downtown Mesa. Yes, that, I, I would love that, but it, when I walked through the Cul-de-sac, and the good, the good thing, the thing I liked about Cul-de-sac is there were a lot of amenities. And I, I think there were, you know, the grocery store and multiple restaurants, good restaurants, and bike shops. And it was a, a very urban feeling lifestyle there, which I think this would be a, a great place to do that. But I can't get over that it felt crowded. And so I'm, but I guess my question is, they said we would do a Mesa version of this that would feel less crowded. Do you get that sense that, that that's what they're proposing?
Mayor, the, the concept that they have, I mean, the pictures that they have presented to us are significantly different than the Tempe development, and it is more Mesa-fied. And it would be something that we would continue to have discussions with. But I just want to kind of go back and kind of touch on this idea of density. And, and right now, you have, you have these, you have these two choices there presented in front of you. One says two, a thousand units, one says 2,000 units. Let's take those and separate them from each other. A thousand units is a lot of density on this site. A thousand units is a quarter, a third increase over the number of units in downtown as they exist today. What, while it doesn't look dense because there are no surface parking lots, it's a 200 units more than what our previous development partner was proposing for us.
Jeff, put it in context, the Brown Brown side, that's how many acres? 10?
Brown Brown side's 10 acres and they're doing 340 units.
And this is 20.
25 acres with 1,000 units. So proportionally, while it, the fact that there aren't surface parking lots makes it look less dense because they're able to more efficiently use the land for open space and, and the units themselves. So I don't, I, I wanted to, one of the reasons I was, we dare a comparison is that we wanted to make it clear that this would be, either of these projects would add a significant population to downtown, to the extent that, that I'm not, I have not been concerned with the density one over the other.
Interesting. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think, just to add my comments on thinking, the direction of what we want to see, right, is do we want a neighborhood feel or do we want a, a project that works with the, the school that we have here as, as ASU, right? I think that's, that's the question at, at the top. I think what direction do we want to go with? Is it a neighborhood feel like Mayor Giles mentioned of, you know, the, the iconic neighborhoods that we have here, or the, the business-minded piece that leverages ASU film study? So I'm conflicted, like Councilmember Spilbury mentioned, as far as, I've always felt us building ASU film that we need another industry hook for that film school, and that this potentially provides that with a studio, the studios provides that hook, that uniqueness that I don't think anywhere in the state of Arizona would be. I know there's, there's production studios in Tucson and a couple other spaces around the state, but this would be kind of your, you, you know, universal studios kind of lots, right? That, that's what I'm assuming. And I'm assuming that Caliber has talks with production companies and other to be able to throw out this proposal. I, I hope, I hope so. So I, I'm conflicted on like the direction of this. Cul-de-sac seems like the, the mix of housing, i, i, it's cool and urban, but is it the direction that we want to go in leveraging what we have as an asset here with ASU? And that's, that's the conflicting parts for me, so.
I, I guess it sounds like, I would agree with Councilmember Summers, that Cul-de-sac really answered what we said was our vision for this space. What I like about them is they seem to be very purpose-driven in their developments. I mean, they really, they, they're intentional in what they're trying to do to create neighborhoods and communities. And I, as opposed to, we've got residential, we've got a commercial, we've got, you know, film, and we've put it all together. It, it seems less cohesive to me, Caliber's proposal. This definitely feels, like I said, like it's more well-thought-out and they're creating this community. And I, I happen to like that. Now, it sounds like maybe, and, and that's what we said, that's what we asked for, but it sounds like maybe we're, we're faltering a little bit on, on what we're, what we're asking for this spot, what we want for this spot. But I guess in the end, I, Caliber's is attractive for some of those, the height, you know, we've talked about getting some height downtown as well as the, the film studio connecting. But this Cul-de-sac's seems like a, a better vision to me. And, and certainly they've answered what we've asked them to give us, which is a, is a community and a community that focuses and really is intent on the, on people. So that's, that's, those are my thoughts.
I understand the interest in the film direction, and I agree, I'm excited about it. However, I just don't think this is the place for it. I believe we can have it still within a, a short distance of ASU, but not necessarily here. And the reason is that we went through extensive community outreach. You said six months, it felt like a lot longer. I remember getting into it before I was on council and going through it after I was on council, to the point I was just like, can we, it was almost like a drive-through situation. Can we talk about it anymore as far as going into the community and having community meetings? It was extensive. I don't want to say that that's bad, that's very good. I'm just saying it was very thorough. It was very thorough, going out into the community and having various meetings throughout the community of, and talking about it. And people would come from outer, outside of downtown in the west neighborhoods, and we'd have these discussions. And I, because of that, it is a rare day that someone doesn't And I, because of that, it is a rare day that someone doesn't come to me and say, why aren't we moving forward? And a number of those people said, I've heard about this cul-de-sac, why, why don't, why can't we get one? Why can't we get it? Is it because we're Mesa? We can have this, something to this quality and this vision and this, when cul-de-sac announced in Tempe, I think within a very short amount of time, like 30, 60 days or whatever, they had pre-leases before they even began to break ground. And they have been in every publication that follows city planning, they've been in every conference as far as a discussion about them. They haven't been there, but a discussion about this concept. So it's highly coveted and regarded, and it's the direction, certainly, of downtown areas where you become less car-dependent. It's a chosen lifestyle we see among young people dropping off rapidly as far as any interest in driving. I have a number of parents who said, I'm trying to get my kid to drive, what can I do? They don't want to drive. They want to live in these car-free environments and then do a car share or other modes for whatever transit they need. I think it would be a gold star on Mesa to have this type, a cul-de-sac here. And being that they're owner, builder, operator, seeing what's going on Tempe, they program that to build the community within the community. They'll, they have little art fairs and different interactions to bring in outside community and build community within it. So it's like a desirable place to hang out. You feel connected to this place because of the interest of the operator, which is cul-de-sac, building these activities to interact with the community, to be a community space. And I think that is the vision that the residents set, is being a space that is, did not feel separate from everything else going on downtown, did not feel separate from their neighborhood, which is nearby, and felt like part and extension of downtown. Also, and as we densify here, and I feel it so much, the concern for open space and green space is growing. We need that for our mental health, to be, especially in a dense environment. We need that space, and having that in this is very, highly, highly attractive in a dense urban environment. And we need a mixed environment of housing. We have old, single-family, historic to like mid-century, and we have apartments. We don't have anything in between, and people are screaming for, I want to buy something that's not 50 to 100 years old. I want to have a townhome. I want to rent something besides an apartment. And I think having these townhomes is not only a nice transition into the historic neighborhood, but it is highly, highly, highly needed, is to have what we call a missing middle, something in between. I love the green space they have along the south end, and is opening this area to the downtown, and then having the TOD. It's a perfect type of development for a downtown. Film studios, I love having them in the short-distance ASU, that'd be fine, but actually, film studios can go anywhere. Cul-de-sacs are meant for an urban environment. It would be a gold star. It would be highly coveted. Mesa had it. I think it's what the community was envisioning. As far as having job opportunities, there's going to be some co-working and commercial space in there. I would love to see an incubation, I've talked about it before, a place for startups and stuff to, incubation and startup expansion, which, building off of what ASU and entrepreneurship, building businesses and having that opportunity and having those spaces within this, is also tying to ASU. So I don't think it is totally disconnected from ASU and having economic opportunity. I think we need the incubation spaces in downtown. We really, we have retail and stuff and a little bit of office, but we really don't have places to build your business, and I think this can present that opportunity. I think that's the majority of my notes. I would like to just go ahead and go forward with this. I don't want it to be a drive-through discussion. It's been, how many years we've been going over this, even on the vision we've set forth? I think we should move forward, and I'm also afraid about not sustaining the interest in this property if we keep on stretching it out. Thanks.
Just one more comment. Just from, that's why I sort of asked about comments from both of the respondents. I understand why we're not doing that, but what I gleaned just from the page is that the development from Caliber, I guess going back, we're really partnering with them as a developer and, and their vision. And Caliber's seem to me more of a development that anybody could build, any large developer could build, whereas cul-de-sacs seems very specific to, to that vision that they've created. And that, to me, that sets them apart.
Mayor, can I just quickly say something? Because I know it's hard when you have to make these decisions, but I want to say this, because I think we tried to say at the beginning, but I want to make very clear before the council makes a decision, we are very appreciative, but we had two strong proposals. We've not always had that on this site. And we fully, our partnership with Caliber will continue for a long, long time because of their commitment to downtown. So I think we want to make sure, whatever decision, I think we, we're hand-in-hand, arm-in-arm with Caliber regardless, and we really do appreciate their commitment for downtown and all they've done, and their willingness to put a proposal together, as well as cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac has done a very nice job of introducing themselves and talking about what they've done, and I think they've spent a lot of time trying to understand what the city's vision was also. But either way, this is the first time since I've been here that when we've gone out and done proposals, we have to, instead of just having just one proposal or one and a quarter proposal, you know, we have two legitimate developer proposals. So I just want to say that at the beginning, we appreciate both of them going through the effort and making this, this is, I think, why it's a tough choice. But again, I just want to make sure that both, both groups understand how much we appreciate their commitment to looking at Mesa. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other, well. Jen Duff and I have been having this debate for a few years now, and we've gone back and forth, and I, so I just want to say, Jen, I thank you for really owning this as part of your district and working hard on it. And, and I was persuaded by what you said just a moment ago. I was a little thrown by this initially, because cul-de-sac, again, I, to echo Mr. Brady, I am a fan of cul-de-sac. I haven't always been. They kind of came in and bought property and held them, and they frustrated me for, and all of us for a while, but, but I think we've turned a corner and they're...
You mean Caliber.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Caliber. Take everything I said in there. Caliber. We just, they do, it's kind of, you know, 200-plus unit workforce development, workforce property with them in downtown, and we couldn't be more pleased. And all of the properties they own are being developed now in very positive ways, so I want to give them the key to the city. They're doing a great job. And they came in and said things that I think are important, you know, partnership with ASU, helping us to cultivate the film industry, bringing height to downtown. They were saying all the, all the things that I wanted to hear, you know, that are But I'm, I've been persuaded, I think now I'm on board with cul-de-sac, because I think it fits into our downtown. That this is going to be, it's going to be attractive, it's going to be, walking into this discussion, I said, what I wanted is a desirable neighborhood, and a place that people would be proud to say, I live in cul-de-sac in downtown Mesa, just like they're proud to say, I live in Dobson Ranch, or Eastmark, or lots of other great places in Mesa. And so I can see that happening. And so I'm ready to go forward as well, and, and agree with staff's recommendations. So I don't know if it would be, should we raise hands and see, I mean, this is not agendized for a vote, but it is agendized for a direction?
Yes. So that direction would cause us to move forward, I think, as I mentioned, to begin having discussions that would lead to some MOU. We'd bring back to council, again, hearing a lot of the questions concerned, we'd want to try to address much of that in the MOU, and then that just can, subsequent going further into the details of an agreement.
Sure. Mr. Freeman.
Jeff, so define between master developer and owner developer. What do we have here between the two RFPs?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I think you, it's not actually an easy black-or-white answer that. With, with cul-de-sac, you have an owner developer, somebody that's going to own the project, develop the project, and then manage the project long-term. With Caliber, you have a combination, where there are certain elements of this project that, that are fully within what Caliber's investment portfolio wants to have, and then there are others where it would be working with partners on development of that site. So it's a, it's a hybrid between developer slash master developer.
But Jeff, because they're using...
OZ funding, Opportunity Zone funding.
Funding, there's a 10-year commitment, yeah. So it's a little, I think they're, I don't know if that's going to be a significant difference here. I think because of the funding source, at least what they're suggesting with the Opportunity Zones, there is a long-term commitment to the project. They have to keep the money in.
On the part that they...
On the part they would develop, yes. They choose to do. I'm just, but I want to make sure it's not, I mean, that is a, that creates a certain commitment, regardless, yeah, whatever portion they decide to use Opportunity Zone funding, there is a commitment to stick with the project. They can't take the money out of that for, I think it's...
10 years.
10 years, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Spilsbury.
And so also, just moving forward at this stage, like, could we still ask them to increase density or to talk to ASU? Like, we could still have those kind of conversations, right? Or is that just not the vision for this?
Well, this is a, again, this is a 10-year development period. So I think the only thing we know for sure is that things are going to change.
Yes.
So I, maybe cul-de-sac will, maybe, you know, have to do development, will come into cul-de-sac and say, can we carve off a corner here? And we'll all say, yes, please do that. I don't know.
You know, one thought, if that's the direction we get from council, maybe the first step before we spend a lot of time in the MOU is to come have them make a presentation to the council and get feedback from the council directly. And we probably want them to do some follow-up meetings with the community also. So I think all that is on the table as we move forward.
All right. Just so we're clear, show my raise of hands, who would like to proceed with staff's recommendations on this? All right. I'm seeing five or six hands. So I think it's, I think we have direction. So I, to Mr. Brady's point, I think that we're still a long way from having a signed deal.
Yes.
And so I would welcome them coming in and sharing their vision, either in a council meeting or individual settings, but, but I agree, there's, we, I hope there's a sense of urgency that's attached to this, that we've all been wrestling with this for way too long, and we'd love to see some progress made, but I think this is an exciting step towards that happening.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll, we'll move forward with that direction, and, and we'll, we'll figure out whether or not it's a study session or presentation, or whether we come in, talk with you individually with cul-de-sac.
Great. Thank you very much, and thanks again to Caliber as well for the great work they're doing in downtown Mesa. The next item on our agenda is current events and conferences attended, council. Anything you'd like to share with us?
I'm going to go in front of you.
Okay.
I attended at Red Mountain Library yesterday, a Boo event, and there were like 500-plus moms and kids there, having a little trick-or-treat at the parking lot at Red Mountain Library. It was very well-attended.
Thank you. Ms. Spilsbury.
I have eight things on my list, and it's already 10 o'clock, so I'm just trying to think what would be the...
We want to hear all eight. Let's hear them.
Well, last Thursday and Friday was the Women Leading Government Conference through the Arizona League of Cities, and I attended some of that, and it was just pretty awesome to see the convention center full of hundreds of women across the state that are doing amazing things. And last Thursday night was our beautiful domestic violence awareness night that a lot of us attended, and it was such a really incredible night that I have enjoyed so much the last few years, so I want to thank everyone who participated in that. Saturday night, Councilmember Freeman and I attended the Police Muslim Advisory Board, the Arizona Police Muslim Advisory Board that's for the whole state, and our own chief cost received an award, so that was really cool, and want to congratulate him on that. That was a nice night. Sunday morning, Councilmember Heredia and Duff and I all participated in the pride parade in the heat. It was really hot on Sunday.
I was impressed that you all made it through.
Yeah, we had to wait over two hours to even start moving. But I also want to thank all the staff that participated in making that a fun event. And then I'll let you talk about Dia de los Muertos, and the, I'll just bring up our fun, exciting news, that Gino Tree Park on McKellips opened up eight more pickleball courts and four more to open this weekend. So 12 new pickleball courts to all of those constituents that have been begging for more pickleball courts. There you go. It's a really, really cool facility, really nicely done, and it was already full-packed to the gills last night with people playing, so that was a really fun thing, and I want to thank our Parks and Rec Department for making that happen, too.
And engineering.
And engineering, and all the people that help. I can't even begin to thank all the people that do things, but it's, it's pretty awesome. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Ms., go forth.
I'll go. I was invited by one of my constituents, Dan Thunin. He is to, to watch a, one of his goal ball practices. He is legally blind. Goal ball is a sport that was created specifically for blind, the blind, blind athletes, and it was fascinating to watch. It was great. Arizona Disabled Sports provides volunteers for refereeing and everything, and it was really neat. And it was at the Broadway Rec Center, which is a really cool place, just a, yeah, a flashback in history, right? I mean, that's what it looks like. But it's neat that it's still there and standing. So anyway, I wanted to thank him and everybody that was there for inviting me, and I really enjoyed seeing that sport. I also went to the semi-annual career fair at Superstition High School, which was, was really well-attended. Superstition High School is part of Mesa Public Schools, but it's actually in the county island, so not a part of Mesa, but of course, a lot of the students that attend do live in Mesa. So I appreciated the invitation to that and enjoyed walking around and talking to the different vendors. And then I was with Councilmember Heredia at the Alter Winter Presentation, I guess you call it, for Dia de los Muertos, and that was great to see, and met with some, some more of the Wyman's delegation, so that was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Duff.
Yeah. It was a busy week. I'll just name off some of these very quickly. CPLC had its 54-year celebration, and Phoenix, the mayor, was also there on Friday night. On Saturday, in addition to the Dia de los Muertos, the studios and ASU mix were celebrating one year, and there was some really cool exhibitions within the ASU building of the work that they do there, and it was fabulous. Oh, that morning, I did participate in the cemetery tour. I know Councilmember Freeman was there also, and I think the others were split between that and the breakfast for the Dia de los Muertos. On Saturday night, I attended the Green Gala. It was at Boyce Thompson Arboretum, and Mesa, the city of Mesa, received an award for our climate action plan, and I accepted it on behalf of the city. It was a beautiful event. It was celebrating 100 years, the Boyce Thompson Arboretum, and it's their first year of the Green Gala, and I look forward to more, maybe one next year. Let's see, on Monday morning, I attended a ceremony recognizing life-saving personnel, Officer Blake from PD, who saved some children from the second floor of a burning apartment fire, and also a team of, people go through training who saved the life of one of our dispatch who had a heart issue while he was at work, and they did, so there's a recognition for them. I appreciate their excellence in saving lives. And then yesterday, I accompanied a group from the Startup Champions Network that did a tour of downtown and what we have going on here for small business and entrepreneurship. that did a tour of downtown and what we have going on here for small business and entrepreneurship. And, oh, oh, I wanted to mention the film festival this weekend is going on. Um, there's like 180 small films, independent films. Most of them are at the ASU Mixit Theater. You can experience it there. Um, out on the plaza, um, in front of the ASU building, Monsters Inc. will be playing, so Bring the Family. And Barbie will be on Saturday. No, is it Friday? Friday. Let's see, the 27th. Um, Barbie, there'll be a screening of Barbie and the, um, Nick Ramirez, the first assistant editor for the film, will be on hand after the screening to talk about the making of Barbie. And then Troy Koltzer, which is the Academy Award winner for Coda and also a Mesa resident, will be featuring a film about his father, which was a former, um, police chief here in Mesa. And he will be here and I think the mayor is attending that as well. And so it's, uh, it'll be a fun weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Just want to congratulate CMC Steel for, uh, opening their third portion of their, uh, steel plant in my district. That's another 100-plus jobs in advanced manufacturing that'll be coming here. Also, congratulations to EBIT for their expanded campus. Uh, we've cut the ribbon on that just a few days ago. Add at least another thousand students, the campuses near the ASU Polytechnic Campus and provides the very education needed for the folks to go to CMC Steel as well as some other, uh, many other businesses. Finally, just as a reminder, this Saturday before you go watch movies in downtown, you might want to pop by 11 o'clock Monterey Park Expansion and the Mesa Express Library's permanent home. Uh, we'll be cutting the ribbon on that. 11:30. Did I say 11? 11:30.
More pickleball. That's great. That's right.
Just another, just a quick shout out for Dia de los Muertos. I served on the committee, uh, organized it and really, uh, a shout out to all the staff and volunteers. Were 250 volunteers help out with that event and takes months, a month of planning, really a great event. I think one of the better, uh, Dia de los Muertos events across the country. And so, uh, we, we had a tremendous turnout from our, uh, our community. So just want to give a shout out to everybody that was involved and, and made that happen. So thank you. And then there's, there's a couple of things on, on the, on the calendar around, um, there's the Fuel of Dreams happening this afternoon with, uh, various different, uh, spots across the city benefiting Special Olympics that Mesa PD, uh, hosts. Um, and so just i- if you see it out there, normally it's in the Fry's, uh, Fry's gasoline, uh, stores across this, a different, uh, across the city, uh, if you lend a hand there. And then tomorrow also at the Fiesta Station, there's a Halloween drive-through event that's happening, uh, from 6 to 8. So I want to say, uh, that folks can drive in their car and get candy and they decorate their parking lot. So, um, Fiesta PD Station on Grove and, and Alma School, so.
Great. You know, this was a week where I was glad we had seven people on our city council because there was just, it was impossible to be at everything. And so, uh, I, I feel bad for the events I missed and, and I'm delighted for the events I was able to go to. But part of what, uh, and, um, part of what I do to represent the city is serve on, you know, uh, the US Conference of Mayors and in other organizations on issues that I think are important to the city of Mesa. And I have an assignment right now to serve as the, uh, the Chair of the Immigration Reform Task Force for the US Conference of Mayors. And that has allowed me to, uh, so last week I was in Washington DC speaking alongside the mayor, uh, the, I'm sorry, the deputy mayor of New York City about the, uh, the migrant surge. Uh, and then, um, later that week, or maybe it was before, I, I hosted the deputy Homeland, uh, Homeland Security Secretary, uh, at, at MAG with, uh, and convened valley mayors to, to get an update from, from Homeland Security's perspective on the roles that cities are being called upon to, to play. Um, so that was, uh, I think we moved the ball a little bit. And then there's, there's some additional funding that's in, being proposed in Congress right now to, uh, 1.8 billion dollars in fact, to support cities and nonprofits that are being called upon by Homeland Security to play a role in, uh, responding to the migrant surge. So, um, I think that's important for us to know that. And, uh, there's some nonprofits and faith groups, uh, in, here in Arizona, in Yuma and Tucson and here in Mesa and in Phoenix that, uh, are doing great work. And, and I appreciate, uh, the role that we have to, to support them and to get reimbursed by the federal government for that. So, and, uh, also I was very grateful to get a little tease, uh, look inside the post. Looking forward to, to that ribbon cutting.
November, next Thursday after study session.
Next Thursday. That was, that was fun to see that. And I think our community is really going to be, uh, excited when the doors are open there and they have the opportunity to schedule a family and, and civic events in the post. Um, Mr. Brady, we mentioned a few of the upcoming.
Yeah, no, I'll, I just reminder, we'll see you again next Thursday morning on, uh, November 2nd. So thank you.
Thank you. That completes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Summers. And, uh, Ms. Philzberry, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you. We are adjourned.